Twenty-six clients, we helped establish twenty-nine new small businesses. We helped obtain capital of four point six million dollars and created a hundred and sixty-one jobs in Walker County. We also offered training to people that want to start a business or are in business with Excel basics, Hub certification, QuickBooks, desktop and online financing your business, access to capital, an IRS practitioner training seminar and social media. Again, thank you for your continued support.
Next up, we have Sarah Wright.
I think they got assigned to an agenda item. Some of them are for the agenda items, yeah.
They want to speak at the agenda item?
I mean, we can do it during the, Quentin.
Policies that these are agenda item people see at the beginning of this.
A beginning of course.
Right, like five minutes.
That is what your fault.
Okay, alright. Oh, okay, alright, I'm, I've got it.
So we got Sarah, right? Okay, yeah, five minutes and Ms. French will give you time on that.
I don't need five minutes. I guess, I know you've all heard how our weekend went a couple of weeks ago. It was not very pleasant. We were blocked in, couldn't go anywhere, couldn't get emergency help, couldn't get fire trucks. It was trashed. My question mainly, where was Walker County Sheriff's Office? Where were they? Why did we not have the backup of our law enforcement? When we could not even get through to the sheriff's office on the telephone? That's not safe. I'm old and I had a heart attack. They couldn't have gotten to me and I called you on your cellphone.
I talked to you.
There you go. So, I mean, it's, we need some help with this. I don't mind them having a good time. I don't even mind the others. But this weekend, it was, it was frightening and it was dangerous. Not to mention the shootings and the fire, that's irrelevant. My main question, where was Walker County law enforcement?
Yeah, we, we cannot really interact with you at this point.
Okay, that's my question. That's what I need answered is where was our law enforcement?
Really, you can't, because it is an agenda item.
Not, not. You, you talk about an agenda.
I, I had to ask Quentin about that. There's no reason why we can't go back and forth on that.
Their five-minute speech time.
If they ask us a question, we can.
Only you can't answer that question. You, there are limited questions you can answer during their five-minute speech time. When you get to the agenda item, you can have a full discussion and talk about it as thoroughly.
We can call them back and have them answer questions if we want.
That's, that's my main question.
Okay.
Thank you. That's from McCafferty.
Good morning.
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 I have to read mine, okay? I would like to begin by stating that I have no opposition to properly located, organized and permitted trail rides or family gatherings. As a resident living in the immediate proximity of FM twenty-five fifty and Roberts Road, my intent is to convey my understanding and experiences during the recent real deal event. Also to see what future mass gatherings see that they cause less harm, damage and expense to the citizens of Walker and surrounding counties. While I do not expect anyone to mention the costs incurred to damaged property, the local hotels, retailers, or the cost to clean up our personal property, or what the expense will be to our taxpayers due to the excessive and repetitive need for first responders at this event site this particular weekend. I'm here to address Walker County's responsibility to its citizens. On September twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, thousands of real deal trail riders descended on our community. They proceeded to disrupt the lives of people living on FM twenty-five fifty and Roberts Road, well as many of those living on FM sixteen ninety west. FM twenty-five fifty was completely shut down from Highway thirty to FM sixteen ninety-six west as event goers proceeded to illegally form four lanes of traffic on a two-lane road. Using bar ditches from both directions, they proceeded to block the intersection of the even narrower Roberts Road. And I have anonymously submitted pictures. I have photos of this area event. For approximately twelve hours on Saturday, I was unable to exit our driveway and go either direction, nor could emergency personnel reach my home. We watched as one officer tried to get through the traffic and they could not. The one officer, um, well, I guess I should back up on when FM twenty-five fifty was completely shut down, the event goers formed four lanes of traffic on a two-lane road using bar ditches and they were coming from both directions. Proceeded to block the intersection of the narrow Roberts Road and that for those twelve hours, there was no way I could have got out of our driveway. There was one officer in attendance off and on at that intersection of twenty-five fifty and Roberts Road. This one officer had no way to control the massive amount of traffic, much less issued citations for the multitude of traffic violations and I watched in video. Including open alcohol consumption. They exited their vehicles, they entered our private property to relieve themselves. The event was shut down early after endangering the lives of event goers in the immediate community. Mass gathering was ordered to evacuate by the fire marshal when emergency responders could not access Roberts Road in the county manor. After the fire occurred, destroying several acres and RV plus other vehicles inside the event which adjoined our personal property. Shortly after the fire, two people were shot inside the camp and just after midnight, multiple rounds of gunfire occurred in close proximity of our homes on FM twenty-five fifty. Residents were alerted and told to lock their homes, turn on exterior lights and be vigilant as the shooter or shooters had not been apprehended. The next morning, residents began to clean up their yards, pastures and sides of the road. Among the trash, broken glass, liquor bottles, clothes, key fobs, there were at least ten forty caliber shell casings that were found. The sheriff's office was contacted and the shells were turned over to Officer Frazier. And we await your, a report or, or recording of that event. Residents of the area are all aware that Walker County was not prepared for an event of this magnitude, even though the sheriff's office met in advance with the promoters. The real deal promoters, Walker County and the sheriff's office were negligent in their duties according to the State of Texas Health and Safety Code, Title Nine, Subtitle A, Chapter seven fifty-one. Insufficient efforts were made in this to issue, obtain or enforce permits or to deal with the massive amount of expected traffic and possible emergency issues. Walker County must revise and enforce their permit code for mass gatherings, including setting a limit for the number of people and animals according to usable space and accessibility. It is imperative that adequate entrances and exits to allow traffic to flow safely and first responders to access a location is in a reasonable amount of time. Require a plan and provisions for the residents to have reasonable access to their properties with traffic control for the duration of the events. Require public notifications and posts and advertisement to the community and let us know. Additional measures need to be addressed. In short, Walker County must prioritize drafting, implementing and enforcing a comprehensive code, ordinance and plan for the health and safety of its residents during any mass gathering. Thank you for your time and your consideration for my statements.
Thank you.
And I look forward to a better championship in Walker County.
Uh, Stewart? Is that Cam Pearl?
Campbell.
Campbell. That's okay.
Judge Christian, other members of the court. Uh, my name's Stewart and we live just off Roberts Road. And I know you're going to hear a lot about that today. Uh, I would like to emphasize, this is not the first time this has happened. It was almost as bad last year. Residents experienced about the same thing. Most of the drivers that came by lived down dirt road this one way and really no one needs to be down there. Had rude comments by drivers that came by trying to get to, which was not, not in this direction. Uh, we're not against them planning, having an event if they want. And I also hope kind of by saying something today, we don't receive some harassment that other members have of, on the websites. Uh, with that, we moved out here about eight years ago.
Hmm.
I had friendly little place. Loved it. My daughter went to, went to school here, is working locally. Uh, couple of things, and I know they've been said, but traffic, uh, you could not get in last year or this year, in or out of. Was a little bit better this year because they tried to make Roberts Road a one-way road, but at its best, Roberts Road is a very poorly paved to maybe fifteen-foot wide road. Not even a thousand people trying to come down. Uh, the fire, we had had a fire on Roberts Road caused by lightning probably two weeks earlier. So there were various, we were under mandatory evacuation. So trying to get animals, livestock, all of that out literally within an hour. Uh, imagine our concern when we walk that pasture and saw another fire. Uh, also knew that what would normally take five minutes for our truck to get there took over. Uh, so, I said, very, very. Also noise, it does disrupt, disrupt the livestock. It also is not something that's limited. You had the music going until past two o'clock in the morning. Even after the fire, when they evacuated, still had music going. Just meant the concert that night was pretty much shut down. And then, uh, of course, the shooting after that, which, which is a concern, I think, for everyone. And trash, even this day, that entire property is covered with trash bags. No one's picked them up. They're out in the sun rotting, so we don't know what's going to happen about that. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is we do have livestock there. It's our home. We also are involved with a lot of FFA, things like that. To transport livestock at any event, you need health papers. I doubt very seriously if any of the horses that were out there had health papers. I'd like to see if they were submitted. And on top of that, you're at a property that has no water. So, for horses being there three days with limited water supply and all of that, and around other livestock, that can infect ours and raise our concerns.
Many crooks?
But you're right.
I'm, I'm fine. Um, I just wanted to address the court and say that I live at one ninety-six Rabbit Road. And you go in on Friday, you don't get out till Sunday. And I would say that if y'all have the power, just stop it, shut it down completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. Willie Taylor?
Right on. I live on Archer Road in twenty-five fifty. Uh, first of all, with the traffic, I, I, I went to ride last year and I went this year. Was traffic wise, right there, Robert Road in twenty-five fifty, someone come through there and sides by the younger's car. He was on plan. So now, they think it's an accident right there at the road, but it's not. The accident is clear. So the officers in Walker County, they shut the road down by Archer Road back towards thirty. They tell you, you gotta go around. So we all go around, go on the other side, that road is shit down. They telling you, you gotta go down the Roberts Road of sixteen ninety-six. You go down now, that road is shit down. So there's nowhere for people to go. Okay, I mean, they go, I'll go around the surface. I noticed a nuisance. It's number five houses on Roberts Road. So what, what it been? Okay, three, three houses participate in the ride every year. For, for water or whatever, they participate in the ride every year. I mean, we just asking, you know, we know the nuisance. I mean, nobody should be in a house. I mean, it should be covered. You have three, three hundred and fifty-eight years. Should be covered in your house. It's a two-day event. And I'm saying, it bring a lot of traffic back there and it bring a lot of revenue, but you understand? We, we, I'm, I'm asking for strict rules too. I mean, like the handbook for trail riders. No one should take a gun to a trail ride. No one. You take a gun trail ride, they're ten foot tall and bulletproof. Everybody don't see. We don't want to stare at nobody. We don't want no problem. We want, we want to correct it. You know, I mean, we have no rights to go to Fairground and vote, so who would bother that? You know what I'm saying? To me, some things are in his favor to us. I'm not no racist and nothing like that. You know, I still people I don't like, but favoritism, it's favoritism. I'm staying in residence out there.
Yeah.
You see, I understand them. But we just want to come in, you know, have no problem. For the shoe, I don't know what. I mean, the good, the bad, ugly, basically, like it was a massacre out there. Okay, I went the next day, went out there.
Right.
And, uh, it was too complicated. Someone was vaccinated, propane tank blew up, it burned a quarter of the air. That's all it was done, but other than that, we just, you know, we don't want to bother nobody, want to commit no crime out there. We just want to know, just go out there with maybe helps somebody. Just have, have fun and have a ride. Now, traffic last year, I want to probably would may come out on the ride. It's a big ride, a month ride. You know, my entire life, I've been trail riding, fixed by you, I was fixed by you. I've never seen an incident where the sheriff's boss is around, it's gonna back inside. Boss ain't got the right to go down the road. I've never seen it in my entire life. But I'm standing, citizens out there, they complained, they concerned. I mean, you know, I like to work it out, something makes sense.
Ronald Alson, Addison? You're gonna get five minutes and then Ms. French's timer's gonna go off and will ask me to stop.
So we just never know.
Yeah. Talk about one of them.
Alright. Alright, so I'm Rodney Addison, I'm the president of the real deer riding club.
Do you speak that up?
Alright. Alright, my name is Rodney Addison, president of real deer riding club. On September the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, we had a trail ride here in Walker County. Uh, and it was pretty pain. I've been doing it fifteen years. Uh, since two thousand thirteen, we gave away a hundred, over a hundred fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty scholarships in an amount of two fifty. The kids, uh, students around the United States based on academic achievement, extracurricular activities, field study. With the, with the assistance of the local organizations and donors, real deal have provided services throughout the community. Each year, the programs and events have been involved with hosting communities of Houston and Husbier. Of our, our group has assisted in feeding the elderly, Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving drive, tour drive, Christmas, back to school events. The real deal also assisted in hurricane harbor relief. Uh, back in two thousand seventeen, also host a father-son fishing tournament. Do a hundred-day school trail ride for the, for the students as well. Uh, real deal reunion, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, provided an economic stimulus for Walker County. Most of the hotels and most of the hotels and town were at full capacity, local convenience stores are packed, multiple stores sold out of multiple items. Western stores, tax shops, tire shops. Were all booming out of, without a town sale. Approximately a hundred fifty RVs, campus washtrays rented from, rented to go to the campsite. Uh, all right, as the organizer of the real deer riding club, uh, we fully, we are committed to the health, safety of everyone in attendance. As president, I wholeheartedly acknowledge the failings and fifteen annual uh, real deal family reunion that takes full responsibility of how things went. I'm openly, I am open and available to speak in detail about any of the events. Weekend events that happen in the surrounding area. The real deal is fully assessing the changes to ensure we do not make the same mistakes in the future. We are utilizing internal staff and external companies familiar with large events, emergency management to perform this analysis. Although we could not have anticipated some of the mishaps that occurred, I apologize for the confusion or inconvenience that was a result this year. Uh, I can assure that, I can assure you that this was an isolated event, incident and was not our intentions. We were in contact with law enforcement and the fire department during the week leading up to the event. We always attempt to work hand-in-hand with local agencies. The real deer club does business with the best intentions involved. We have continued to make assessments, necessary changes to the community. But suggestion, we're looking forward to allow, to being allowed to structure a hostile event back in Walker County. We just didn't have no space. We had a lot of people came. It was like a hundred and fifty acres. We just wanted no space. By three o'clock, everything was kind of jam packed. You know? There were four different, like four different, one parcel, it's like it's eighty acres, another one was fifty. We had two more overflow pockets. Oh, quiet up. It was pretty much, too many people came at one time. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Rodrick Davis? Maybe we'll, let, let the speakers have their time to talk. Y'all have your time to talk.
My name is, uh, that's my brother. Um, we came to Walker County, we felt like we went through all the proper channels to ensure that we, before we came here, uh, like I said, we spoke with law enforcement and different agencies. Um, I just think what happened was out of our control. Um, as far as the property, what he was saying that was a hundred fifty acres, that was told to us directly by the person, the round was that owned the property. For the three property in a hundred fifty-one acres, um, as far as the situation with fire, we saw in the news to say that cars and RVs, it was like two RVs that burned up. There was no cars burning up. The isolating shooting incident that we heard about, we shut the gate down at three o'clock. So that happens, we were already closed, so we don't know what happened with that. Um, so it wasn't our intention to come here to try to create any type of malice or any misbehavior. I just think that sometimes when not only just our event, different events go on, like there's several events that happen in our hometown of Houston. Um, once you start mixing different age groups together, some things just get out of control. Get out of control. And, uh, like I said, we didn't come to Walker County to destroy Roberts Road or anything. We even came back and we saw like on the internet where a lot of the residents, they were saying that we didn't clean up the trash. We actually walked around and picked up the trash in front of the, the homes and everything because that wasn't our intention. Um, on twenty-five fifty where the trash was, the Roberts Road was shut down. So we understand, that's why we came back up there Sunday and Monday to clean up the trash because we understand the road was blocked off for hours. So people created their own parties on the side of the road. Right thing for us to do was we went back there pick up the trash because we never tried to leave anyone's property in disarray. And we apologize for what happened. It was something was just out of our control, you know, starting with the fire and the incident, I guess it was an accident on the road that kind of caused the road to be shut down there when a lot of it went down. Then when EMS and the fire department came in, people just haven't, didn't have any of those. I know a lot of the complaints, I don't think the complaints were about the fact that the trail ride was on the property. I just think a lot of the complaints that we saw, you know, the internet was just the fact that it was trash. He picked that trash up on the road. Again, we apologize for that. There's anything you can do to try to fix it and make it better.
Thanks, man. Don Martinez?
Morning. Good morning. How are you?
Good, having a good day.
Pretty good. I, uh, I heard about the incident. Uh, I'm president, my name is Don Martinez. Most of you know me very well. And there's, there's several, there's several things that I want to kind of cut going. Obviously, there was some conflicts, without a doubt. Uh, but also, one of the things that what we see is an example of is the power of social media. And what these young men were able to do, bring in ten thousand people into our community. We did have bad things happen. Uh, I'll list it this way. I've heard about different things that happened, didn't actually witness them myself. Uh, saw a few videos, got invited to some groups, things like that. But I would like to say that when my family first came to Walker County, their office staff sort of hurt down because we were different.
Because what?
Because we were different. We stuck out. We were supposed to be off the grounds of that terminal. And we were. So I would like to commend the ability to bring in those dollars into our community. Were there mistakes made? Absolutely. Correct those steps. Absolutely. But I think that I would like to see ten thousand people at the Walker County Fair. I would like to see ten thousand people at the Veterans Museum. I would like to see all those dollars coming into our community to help our community. We're very poor. We're right above Po County, San Jacinto County. So my apologies about my emotions today, but I have thought about this in detail for weeks. And I wish no ill. I want us to move forward with a plan that we bring these people in responsibly. We make the appropriate plans, we staff, we do whatever it takes to make these things continue. If you don't think our, our county is changing, our country is changing. Our state is changing. Stop by, Bucky's. I went this weekend, picked up some great kids, saw some strange things in Dallas, Texas, things I would never see around here. With that, thank you for your time.
Stephen Ebner?
Sorry, my name is Stephen Ebner. Uh, I'm a property owner, taxpayer and citizen of Walker County. Came here to address, uh, concerns that I've had regarding the real deal trail ride that was held on Roberts Road. Uh, most of the residents out on sixteen ninety-six, twenty-five fifteen Roberts Road. Uh, they're familiar with the annual trail ride, happens every year. Uh, not really any one specific group, it's, it's multiple come out there throughout the year. Uh, as my understanding, after doing research and stuff, that gathering of five hundred plus people required to have a permit. Evidence that we found that there, there wasn't, there was no application one, there was no due non-process of it. Uh, that's something about all of this supposed to, supposed to be had. Uh, real deal trail ride had more than five hundred attendees present, so with anticipated attendance of ten thousand more patrons, however, we found no evidence that the permit was applied for. Uh, as this event and its promoter failed to follow the Texas Mass Gathering Act, following transition occurred. There was no apparent preparation for medical care, uh, physical health, safety or sanitation for an anticipated ten thousand event attendees. It was witnessed that several trailers dumped raw sewage, gray water on the county roads and other citizens' property. Uh, the most obvious and dangerous intrusion was the extremely congested traffic on FM twenty-five fifty, sixteen ninety-six and Roberts Road. Uh, fire emergency, medical services and police were, were pretty limited on accessing that. Uh, I spoke one of the fire parties, uh, at Barney's, he said it took about thirty minutes to get from sixteen ninety-six to the event. Uh, it was another thing that was kind of concerning was they had photographs of hospital TV, all violations. There was vendors out there selling alcohol. A concern for the agriculture aspect, including that there was no access to running water for livestock, uh, no review of cottons testing. Uh, which is required for all equine assemblies as equine infection. Transmittable and contagious to other animals. Uh, I read a lot of stuff, a lot was already been gone over. My main deal is. Not, not against people having fun, having a good time. But whenever it affects the people around you, the community that we live in, that's, that's a big problem. Uh, I think I've heard about people that couldn't get out of their house. Uh, some happened to them medically. What's come of that? You know, responder taking thirty minutes to get there, thirty minutes to get out. That's somebody's life that's at stake. If they didn't have this permit, it was never applied for it. Always shut down. All this stuff. I had a, a neighbor. They tell you really, they can't control everybody. And I have a neighbor had his lock cut on his gate. He had people parking out on his property. Well, he was a home, he got a phone call from a buddy of his. Just something like that's unacceptable for people who live in that area. They're. By themselves for their kids. Had to sit on my porch, that I have to, I sat on my porch at three o'clock in the morning with a gun. I mean, it's just, it's, it's unacceptable. Needs to be better, better organized. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don Redd.
Connor Lyles, uh, Luda Walker County, I'm live. Uh, I just want to make some statements, just yeah, mass gatherings as a whole, not. Specific to any entity or, or event. Uh, there's ways to do it, ways not to do it. Uh, proper planning is a lot of it. There's a lot of money that comes in from these events. Uh, not just this event, there's several others we've had problems with in the past, like anybody, whatever what they are. We've had shootings, we've had fights, we've had extended EMS and fire response and everything else to a lot of different events. Uh, I just want to make sure that reading through the health and safety code. And everything that's required and that just before is a needs jerk reaction that gets made, make sure that all of the. Things are in place to be able to properly enforce whatever I do put in place because. Uh, there's a lot of indirect costs involved and a lot of things that, uh. We'll say if they aren't enforced across the board, probably could go, uh, could go different ways as well. It could have some liability for me. Uh, we put thirty five thousand people in a hundred and eighty acres in Texas twice a year. Uh, it's a two day event, goes in and out. It's all pre-planned, it's got a tech site planned, medical's onsite, fires onsite. It, it goes off. Are there incidents? Yes. Are there people that go to jail? Absolutely. Go to the hospital? Yes. But it's pre, uh, pre-managed and that's the, that's the main thing. So whatever y'all decide to put in place, I definitely think there's things that need to be. Uh, put out there and, and regulations and everything, but we got to be able, the county to be able to fulfill our end of it as well on being able to staff. Those positions that are, that are required to be able to do that.
Thanks, Colin.
Uh, Ellie, did you have any more? And that's the end of citizens input. We're gonna skip to number. Twenty one, Gary, sorry. Twenty one, discuss trail rides in Walker County, Texas on Robert's Road on September twenty second, twenty third and twenty fourth of twenty twenty three. And previous trail rides. Commissioner White.
I ask this to be put on because we did have a extreme amount of problems this time, you know, I mean, and, and I'll be the first to tell you, I believe in property rights. Honestly do, I think property rights is very important and we don't want to give them up. But this time. They didn't pull a permit. I think they need, need to be able to know that you're gonna get over twenty five hundred people. And if you guys want to come up and visit with us too, that's okay right now. But you know, there's gonna be over twenty five hundred folks, no doubt, you should, you should pull a permit. And then by pulling that permit, it puts you in contact with our judge. And our judge has a set of rules that he will go by in the seven fifty one code. Which would pretty well organize the event. Now, you know, blocking the road is to me is no, it should never be blocked where these residents can't get in and out. Where our EMS director can't get an ambulance down it or a fire truck down it. That should never, ever happen. But it's happened this year, it happened last year. And it's happened before also when, when it was over on Booker Road and different places we've had different events. So this, this is a common problem we've had for a long time and we, we've got to come to a conclusion and make it where it works. For the residents and it works for the event person themselves. I know you out there, Rachel. Would you stand up and tell us the problems that you had?
I'm Rachel Parker. I'm the chairman chief here, uh, at Walker County. So. We did start seeing an increased call volume out of that area, um, on Friday, um. The challenges we met, um. Were directly through safety on our end. Um, EMS, that's the first thing we do. Seeing safety and cuisine is not safe, we are not going in, which further delays response to whatever emergency. So. We saw everything from severe dehydration, seizures, chest pain, um, alcohol and drug related. Um, calls to shootings. Um, we actually had to fly one of the shooting patients out. Um. We staffed an extra truck until three o'clock in the morning. Um, I came and I personally did that. Um, we had Montgomery County Hospital District come up and stage a truck at Crabbs Braries Station forty one. Or as they would not get anywhere near the event, so we had to bring the patients to them, um, due to their kind of rules and, um. You know, from their, 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 their. Um, so they were a help, but. We had so many units constantly in and out. We had calls coming in where we couldn't even find the patients. We would get another call, we would have to basically, we are basically treated it, uh, like a mass specialty incident. Because we had so many calls coming in and we couldn't find the patients. We had two ambulances damaged, um, in traffic trying to get patients out. Um, we were patient loaded at that time and it was just from the congestion in the roadways. Um, and when our crews did try to stop and do the right thing, get information, um, they were met with hostility. And so we had to send E P S back out to investigate it, um, and just go. So, um. We thought about manning our ATV and sending it out there, but without going in with law enforcement, I. I stopped that because it's a safety concern. Um, our ATV is not covered, so our crews would be susceptible to. Whatever. Um, so it was a huge challenge for us. Our crews literally ran day and night, um, no rest. We. Staffed, um, our logistic coordinator, um, our assistant chief, uh, and a truck up at Station Forty One overnight as well. Um, so Crabbs Bridge is very hospitable, um. I would just say we spent the past year planning for fair on the square. We had resources brought in, we upstaffed. Um, we had an extra truck, we had. All kinds of plans, communication plans, um, action plans in place, um, planning for any scenario and. I'd say any event like this needs to be planned for appropriately, um, because it's just a, a public safety. You know, kind of.
All right, thanks, Rachel. Sheriff, I know you done come in. Uh, Miss Sarah brought some concern, concerns that the sheriff's department was not out there or didn't show their face or whatever, but. I don't know, I don't know how she said it, but I, I'll vouch for y'all because I talked to y'all on the phone. I know they was all over the place out there because I was on the telephone with your officers. So what, you wanna?
We, we. Of course, public saving, uh, po- public safety issues of great concern. Uh, every staff member that I had available, we still have right at nine hundred square miles in addition to the event that was occurring at. Robert Road in twenty five fifty and sixteen ninety six. So we have an entire another county such as EMS does and the fire department. So we have all of, all of the areas to continue to enforce the law and to provide public safe, safety, uh, services to our, our public. Uh, I had every available officer that was not currently tied up on that scene the entire time. Everybody else that was available, um, I can't give you a number at any specific time. I was in, in communication with my operations lieutenant. Uh, we had, like I said, we had everybody, had everybody there that was available. We work off of a, a minimal staff. We've got nine hundred, right at nine hundred to shot, nine hundred square miles of area to cover. And this is a huge, huge event and it was of the utmost importance to get our public back into a safe period. But we also do, if everybody would keep in mind, we still have everything, nothing stopped. Everything else continues going on. Our, our attempt to kidnappings and our shootings and our other stuff continued on in other areas. Uh, so. In addition to trying to provide y'all with that information, those that are hosting the event, as mentioned by Commissioner White. Anytime you get on, get on the internet and start using social media, inviting, inviting people to those type of events, you have no, you have no way. Uh, to determine the outcome. And you know, it could be huge. We've, we've run into this problem as mentioned in the past. And I can tell you, we're gonna do everything on our part to prevent that from happening again. We need y'all to do the same thing. Need y'all to make sure of that, uh, to, I believe in property rights, just as the other commissioners do and, but. But we're gonna do something this next time. If it ends up here, we're gonna do something to prevent it being such a problem. I guarantee you that.
It wasn't property rights, it was safety.
Safety is a, of absolute, absolutely. The discussion of the, the two lane road being blocked with traffic.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's, that's what we were trying to clear and try to get taken care of in the very beginning. I mean, that, that was the number one priority because we gotta be able to get emergent. Well.
Did not work.
The, just to kind of back up just a little bit, my operations lieutenant in patrol division. Have been in communication with a Harris County, uh, deputy or employee. That they had, were supposedly had somewhere in the area of thirty, uh, off duty officers that were actually going to be working security there. My guys refused to work it. Now, if they're on duty, they're gonna work wherever I tell them to work. But when they're off duty, they get to select their extra jobs. My guys refuse to work it because of the problematic issues. So I, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have officers that are gonna work that.
So you left residents in an area that your officers didn't want to work. What does that tell you?
It, it doesn't work that way. That's why I had every, everybody that I had that was available. That's why they were there.
It was not enough. That's our point.
Well, help me get some higher.
And, and the Harris County officers left, if I understand this correct, Sheriff, is that true? Did the Harris County officers leave?
Harris County actually told my operations lieutenant the week of the event that they were no longer gonna host the event because of the pastures being dry. And the other, other problematic issues. So when, as of the point when the Harris County, and I don't know what his, what his ranker status is. Is when, when he told my lieutenant, he said, hey, we're not gonna host the event. There's too, there's, you know, too much fire hazard, too much problem. It's just not a good time to do it. That's the last time I heard about it until the day of the event. I take that back. I did hear people started coming in on Thursday. The first day I was made aware of it was on Friday.
You know, you couldn't get through the sheriff's office.
Well, it probably, well, here's the thing, just so everybody knows regarding the sheriff's office. Anytime on a weekend or anytime after five o'clock, and this goes not only for the sheriff's office, but it goes for EMS, it goes for the fire department, it goes to. Uh, the, the police department. There is a centralized dispatch center. So when you call, it doesn't matter if you look up and call. The, uh, Huntsville Police Department or you call the what kind of sheriff's office, it goes to dispatch. Dispatch is a centralized, uh, communication center that dispatches for every entity. So you're exactly right. You, af- after the, after your normal business hours, all of your staff is out on the road. They're all working districts. They're all responding to calls. So probably part of the reason for getting, not being able to get through to dispatch is going to have been because of the volume of calls. Pertaining to this event that were coming in there from a, you know, reference, a concern. So that probably had a lot to do with. Dispatch, dispatch doesn't work for me. They don't work for any law enforcement entity, uh, in this county. Dispatch is its own division. It's its own. It's, they actually are their own department. And so they're not controlled by me or whatever. So I had no, I have no control over that.
Yes. Uh, I don't know, sure, all, all the laws are, uh, without the permit being pulled. How is it allowed? Well, ask Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Well, the, in, in just a moment, I'm going to, because we have had the opportunity to visit with, and I don't mean to. Don't mean to, uh, say that this will be an opportunity for the district attorney's office to discuss and to talk a little bit because there's been a lot of research. We've met with a lot of people. In trying to determine exactly what we're gonna do next time. A lot of times, a lot of times, everybody needs to understand, a lot of times it takes an event such as this for everybody to get on the same, on the same piece of carpet. In order for us to be able to control and, and put things in place that are not in place. So it takes this type of event, we, in, in some cases, unforced. But I can promise you that as long, as long as I'm here and I'm your sheriff, we're gonna continue to work on this to make it better, better each and every day, or each and every year. But to finish answering your question, if you don't mind, uh, if y'all don't mind, one of y'all, if you will speak on that just a little bit. Um, and I'll just pause for a second.
Well, I mean, the, the policy is in place right now. Y'all have a policy. The problem is, uh, this group, maybe other ones did not, uh, pull a permit, as you would say, so. Commissioners court never got to hear the plan to set a plan for health, set a plan for safety, to set a plan for traffic. None of that happened in this situation. So, uh, was that wrong? Yeah. Is it a violation? Could be, if you have more than twenty five hundred people, you have to have a permit. That's the way it is. So. You know, um, we'll look at whether or not it's an offense that can be prosecuted. That's after the fact. But what we want to do is not have this happen again. So if, if a group like the real deal has a. Situation where they think it's gonna be over twenty five hundred and from the social media, there's no doubt it's gonna be over twenty five hundred. You've got to pull a permit. And if you're not pulling a permit, you're in violation of the law.
I'm, I'm gonna, let me interrupt you.
Right, under, and somebody talking, that's under chapter. And it lays out exactly what has to be done.
Yeah.
And there can be hearings on this where this whole court here is gonna ask questions and have.
That's not, that's not how it works. It's, it's a separate court hearing.
No, no, but you have a hearing and then.
But it's not this court.
Right, you, you, it's, it's.
Right. All right, let me, let me.
Ultimately will make the decision on what gets done.
All right, let me, let me interrupt real quick. I've been on court, this is my seventh year. We've never issued a mass gathering permit, so I have no interest in any, any prosecution of this group. As opposed to the Walker County Fair, exact same thing. So I, I have no interest in that. What, I don't know what the court does.
I don't think it's what we were saying. I'm, I'm.
Well, he's gonna investigate and see.
In the future, we're gonna have to do permits.
So.
From this point on, everybody.
Exactly, and that's the important part. And even chapter seven fifty one, it gives you two, you know, gives you two levels, you know, above twenty five hundred, no matter what. Um, above five hundred, if there's gonna be some minors and alcohol, stuff like that.
Or a hundred with horses.
Okay, but it doesn't give you any criteria. So we have zero criteria. So that's, we have an agenda, not a number twenty. That will talk about that. So in the past, the biggest problem I ever heard, um, was the road and you brought that up several times.
Yes, it's always blocking the road. People don't have access to their home. They don't have access to get emergency medical service in and out.
And our response has always been the horses are allowed on the roads and that's outside of really, all I'd heard.
Well, it's, it's not the horses blocking the road, it's the cars and stuff. You know, vehicles, I mean, the horses can get in the bar ditch or go down the road or whatever, but they're not in the way.
So that's been a problem. So she.
There is no trail.
Ma'am, ma'am, I understand that, but. Kind of lost my train of thought there. But this group and other groups have been coming to Walker County. And we've never asked any of them to, to pull a permit. So I think we need to step away from, you should have pulled a permit. Because they haven't asked anybody to pull a permit. They did.
But, well, by law. And you go to the code.
Right.
They're responsible over twenty five hundred people.
Right, so when.
They're responsible.
And, but I'm gonna be fair to them. And when the president of Walker County Fair comes.
And they're responsible too.
And that's what I'm saying. So that's where I want to be is from here forward. I agree a hundred percent with what the sheriff said. It took a pretty good knock on the forehead for us to say, hey, we gotta do something. And in chapter twenty, I have something I sent to y'all and Brandon had seen, I guess, before or two. Um, there is a model. That we, that we can go by, that we don't have to recreate the wheel, that when somebody comes in and says, hey, I'm gonna have. Five thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand people at this gathering. We can give them this piece of paper and it says things like, if somebody says you need to have medical, but who the heck says what the medical is? Well, this, it's Montgomery County's policy. It, it specifically says you have to have three of these, two of those, four, three, one of these, five of those, eight of these. How many bathrooms, how many security, what's your road plan? It all has to be there. So I hate what happened, happened. Uh, you know, but. Uh, you know, but. The guy brought ten thousand.
Basically.
Fix it, exactly. And I like Conrad said, and, and Don Martinez, this guy brought ten, twelve something thousand people to Walker County. We'd be dancing in the streets. If somebody said, hey, I got a ten thousand people, I'm going to bring them to Walker County for three days. We'd be like, that's awesome, bring them. Hang on one second.
Hold on, hold on.
So that's, that's where I'm at with it. We are where we are with it. I'm a firm believer in it doesn't. It doesn't matter how much you spent to get what you own, you own what you own. Well, we own, we own this. So let's, let's make the right decisions going forward from here, and I think we're going to do that. So. Um, I'm sympathetic to the folks who live out there, and that was a tough weekend. I was following it. I didn't, I didn't chime in on, I didn't drive out and look at it, but I. I've, I've heard from enough people that it was. The challenge that we can't repeat. We know we can't do it again that same way. I think we a hundred percent all agree on that. So, um. That's my comment on it. It, it was what it was. Sheriff wants to fix it, Will wants to fix it, district attorney wants to fix it. We want to fix it, so let's, um.
And the residents need it fixed.
Residents need, that's the most important thing. Residents need it fixed, so let's do that.
So, you know, I mean, the bottom line is, I mean, the traffic's blocking everything.
Sure.
Is a major, major issue.
So they have to have a, so they have to have a traffic plan.
Yeah.
You know, they have to have a, a cars in and out plan. All that needs to be.
I was going to say, I'd just like to make one.
Would you state your name for the?
My, my name is Stuart Campbell. I had spoke earlier. I'd just like to make one other point because. I understand things working in place. I don't want to go back to kind of harassment.
Mm-hmm.
However, this event is still not over. There are hundreds of garbage bags. City that are starting to tear open on the site to this day.
Yes, they are.
No.
What time?
This morning.
They can't.
There's still trash bags.
Hey, so we, we talked to court, you know, we don't talk to each other. So y'all, y'all can address us.
So we had, um, what was the company's name?
I think K U out of Huntsville, they provided a dumpster, bought a dumpster out there. And the trash has been picked up. I didn't pay for, I think, right at eight dumps.
Your name for the.
Ronald Addison, Ronald Al- Addison.
Okay.
I, I drove out there before daylight this morning. I couldn't see very well, but there is definitely a trash bag right there where you turn in because I've seen it. Okay.
Mr. Taylor, you had something?
I got a question.
Chesley.
Chesley.
What about, and they got to be so much land per person or they don't step on each other? Has the road's got to have decent ingress, ingress, egress?
That's all addressed on the permit process. Anybody else want to address the court on anything on the trail?
Let, let me just make one last statement, because I mean, I went out there Sunday, carried my wife out there. And we took pictures of the trash on the road. And I had to deal with a couple of young men out there that was very mouthy. You know, just because I'm taking pictures. That doesn't need to happen. I can imagine what the residents dealt with. You know, I was out there when nobody was out there and I still had to deal with that. That attitude's got to go. You know, I mean.
It wasn't locals, it was out of town people.
It doesn't, yeah, I mean, good, I understand. I mean, it, it definitely not the local folks. But you, you draw that many people, ninety percent of them probably out there to have a good time, no problem at all. And there's always an element that the. That, that's a problem when you get that many people in place. But just, just to let you know, I did, I did have words with a couple of them just because I was taking pictures.
Ronnie, where is the rail they're supposed to ride on? Where are they supposed to ride?
The, the.
Where's the trail?
I, I'm going to just let the sheriff answer that because transportation code actually gives them the right to be on our highways.
That's, but there is no trail ride.
There doesn't have to be a trail, there, there, there's a trail for a trail ride. That's public roadways, everything.
But the only way they can do that on our road blocks the road.
Yes.
If they ride on the road, it blocks the road.
Yeah.
It's not a wide road. It's not a.
I'm, I live, I, I've lived out in, out in there for many years and, and have dealt with stuff like that, and I certainly sympathize with it. But.
There's nowhere for them to ride.
The prob, the problem is, is the way the laws stay and, and which provide, makes us, we have to stay within, from an enforcement standpoint or whatever. Within the laws. A lot of this stuff may need to be talked to our legislators. Our legislators may need to be ones to help change some of the laws and stuff in place. Uh, I'm a believer in the property rights, but you're exactly right. We've got to, and when there's a transportation issue. Any direction on any public roadway, you've got to be able to get medical, like, assistance there. You got to. Or fire, fire assistance, whatever.
You're going to have to purchase situations of Tommy's going down the road. Happy fun.
That's great.
Well, Skyler, did you have something?
Yeah, uh. Last year, when we, when they had to ride, we lived on the ride at two o'clock. And they gave us like four hours to get back to South Gate. And then we moved to D, we, uh. Left at two o'clock, by four, by, by, by six o'clock, we're back inside the gate. Now, that said, probably us, we leave Robert Road guard around sixty-nine, sixty, he's getting sixty-nine, six, that's track. They're twenty-five fifty bucks. They said we back in four hours. Last year, they back in four hours. There was no problem. But this year, like I said, the problem was, it was been an accident right there, twenty-five fifty Roberts Road. It was hit and run. Person took off. Now, on the law, full time, uh, the accident's still down there. Of what? But it was no accident at all. So they blocked off, like they blocked trap out on both sides of the road, but nobody go nowhere. From Jack, from Archer Road, highway to highway thirty down by the cell phone call, it was track. Not for Archer Road here from thirty, they had to sell on, it was, it was track, Dr. O. Each side. There was nowhere for nobody to go. Everybody going in circles.
Sheriff, will you say something about your crews that picked up all the trash? I know you sent some guys.
I, I did, uh, I sent a, uh, inmate, uh, squad out to help pick up trash, uh, to the best of our ability.
Yeah.
Can't pick it up on private property, but we did so inside of the easement, the, the state and county easement, fence to fence and to include the roadway. Uh, trying to be as big of, as much of a benefit as possible. Um, done that a couple of times, uh, in, in, if there's still other problematic areas, I have no problem at all. But.
It's probably, it's probably, I think where the trash is, and I can only tell what I've seen.
Private property.
Still on the acreage where they had, they, I, I don't care. That's their land. They won't pick it up, they clean it up, they, I mean, they made money on it. I, I'm not worried about that trash. Y'all did a great job. My area of picking up on public, you did.
I appreciate it, appreciate it. And just so you know, also, also the, uh, the, the dumping or trash that's still on private property. That is also under investigation. There is a thirty day window by law that has to be provided in order to clean that property up. And so all we're doing is, is waiting for that period. As soon as that, as soon as that thirty day falls, if it hadn't been done, there's going to be some citations issued. Uh, so we've got that in place as well.
And that's like I said, that's their property, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all did a great. I cleaned mine up. Everybody kind of cleaned theirs up. Y'all got the right away. You did a great stuff. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I've said before, Sheriff, and I told Andy this too, if you need to complain it, I'm your guy.
Yes, sir.
I don't like all that trash everywhere. They need to be cleaned up.
Yes, ma'am.
So is.
Hold on, we got one right here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, can you state your name, Kelly Le Duke? So, um, the concern that we really had all the rest of the time. Was the fire rate here, and I wanted to know when they pulled a permit, if indeed we have drought conditions. And we had just had a fire. It was terrifying. We felt we were going to have our house burnt down. When we saw a fire again, it wasn't very far, the fire from the, the trail ride. And who's to say? At, at some point in time, did they say it's not appropriate to have a gathering like this on dry land? People having fires, even dropping cigarettes or whatever. We just were waiting for a fire to start, sure enough. And then after the fact, you know, your house is burnt down and apologies really nice, but gee, next time we'll do better. I feel as though at any point in time, does the fire marshal say, you know what? You got your permit, but this isn't going to work out. It's, I'm really unsafe. We had unprecedented fires issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jack, I'm, so I'm trying to ask the question. So do you not want any trail rides going on out there? Is that what you're saying?
I haven't complained for six years about trail rides out there.
Okay, okay. Ja- Jackie.
That was.
Jackie, you, you address us.
Okay, Jackie, Jackie, okay. So I'm asking, do y'all have a problem with trail rides out there, period?
No.
No.
Okay, so I believe there's been a property on them. You can have any kind of event you want to on your ride as long as legal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the issues coming in with the trash on the side of the roads and what else?
Uh, the.
Okay, so if there is a better way to control the traffic. I don't, I don't understand where, where there shouldn't be able to have trail rides on the property.
If, if they pull the permit because it's going to be over the, the large amount, all that will be addressed in that permit.
Right.
That, that will, that will organize it.
You mentioned before that it was a trail ride, you know, with a traffic issue off of Booker Road. And then I know who you're talking about, but since that happened, the trail ride had been moved over to another area.
All right.
And it was in March. So did y'all have any problems or hear anything that happened in March?
I didn't think there was one, so no.
You didn't, I had a hill trail ride over there.
I, I, I didn't, I, I.
I think that's something, sorry, here.
Yeah, it's all about controlling something. We had so much security over there. Okay, what'd you say, Scott?
So, go, go ahead, Ms. Jack. I'll, I'll finish it when we get done.
He has so much security, so it's not, it's unfair. To come in here, I mean, you know, they have the big thing at the, like they had the past weekend, okay? They found the square, okay? So don't judge everybody's trail ride the same. That's all I'm asking.
The fair on the square, I'm going to clear this up, is inside the city. We have no jurisdiction in the city.
Right, mine was out on the property. I was, I hosted one out on the property, from one, okay? So, like I said, there was no issues, no major issues, okay? Because we had everything in line and everything taken care of. From permits to. The insurance and everything.
Good for you then.
So you never heard about it, right? So I'm just asking to take that into consideration. Okay?
Okay, so Ms. Jackie, I don't think anybody's against the trail rides or anything else. This has happened multiple times. Move, move, moving forward, not, not looking in the past, moving forward, we're going to have to do some things to.
Right, I understand that.
Adams, help, if, if they're going to continue to have it here.
Hmm.
Um, and just trying to organize this thing to where we don't have these problems again.
Exactly, I understand that.
We don't need to keep going back to the past because what's in the past is back there. And, and so it's not just y'all, it's not just a trail ride. We've had this problem out in my area. Uh, for many, many years, which finally got it under control.
Right.
Um, and it just takes time. And this is going to be kind of the part that takes the icing on the cake and we're going to have to say, look, from now on. This is the way it's going to be. If you want to continue to, to have something here. Then this is the way it's going to be, and if not, there'll be consequences.
Right.
I'll, I will say this, I did come through there and. Their bunch, the real deals bunch was picking up trash. There was probably fifteen people out there picking up trash up down the county roads. You know, um, it, it takes a while. Um, if they don't get it picked up, then. Obviously, environmental will, will be in touch with them and, uh, on the, on the private property. And they'll take it from there. But, um, moving forward. It's, it's going to be different. It's got to be different.
Well, I can understand that, but I'm just saying, take the other groups into consideration as well, who held their own.
Yeah.
And who did what they were supposed to do.
And, and.
They, we need events to go to because, because in Huntsville, we don't have anywhere to go.
Absolutely. A, a, and that's been a problem for a long time. You know, kids don't have anything to do. Um, and, and so, you know, but within consideration of that. If a gathering of this size or, or anything over twenty-five hundred people is going to have to go through the process.
Okay.
You know, and, and ignorance and saying, well, you know, we didn't, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. If, if we say, well, we didn't think it was going to be that many. When nowadays with social media, I don't know how many people are out there. It's hard for me to believe ten thousand people were out there, but I bet you Buddy was over five. You know, um, so it, it's something's got to be done. And, and that's where we're at. That's what.
Well, I totally agree with that. Okay, I was just asking about the orgy property, okay? Whatever the runners do on their property, that's their business. I ain't got nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's against events to my knowledge, as long as they run properly and, and follow the laws, so. Anybody got anything else before we close this?
They, uh, we do, uh, have a trail ride coordinator or something. Want a trail ride coordinator, anybody know about trail rides, sprint trail ride, have a coordinator, the coordinate one, county and.
The, the, the key is going to be, if it's going to be that large a crowd, you've got to do the permitting.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no way around it. And, and with all the. Social media and things that went on this time and it got so big. You know, had you went through the permitting process. You would have had a plan in place for the traffic. You'd have EMS out there of some sort, whether it's ours or y'all got somebody else out there. You'd had everything intact like you're supposed to, and we probably wouldn't see the event that happened this last two weeks ago.
And that's, that's exactly right. That, that is the pro, that's the beginning process for all, for everything to be in place for this, for everything to go right. To make sure that we have the access, to make sure that the, the appropriate security is in place. That is the beginning point. If you, if you go apply for that permit with Commissioner Score, it allows everybody else from a first responder standpoint. To get it. But when it sneaks up on you, it's really hard, it's really hard to do, really hard to do it in advance.
Your point's going to be contact the judge's office.
So that, that's going to be addressed on item number twenty.
I mean, we're kind of open here, so I mean, it's not being near as open on the next agenda item, but do y'all have anything else, Don?
Don.
You can't put ten thousand people on that acreage.
That would be addressed in the permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to, to address on, um. On the size of the land, there actually are some. Part of the planning, uh, that have to be, uh, taken, taken care of. But this is, yeah, one of the things that I would look at, Harrison, was, um, my fraternity, many, many years ago, decades ago. Uh, used to work the Texas Renaissance Festival. And it was a huge inconvenience to the local, uh, community that first started. Uh, there was a lot of devocary. I was usually at the brand center of it. But, uh, as it's grown, it has become a very, very financially violent. Entity that people look forward to every single year. I know for almost forty years, it's been going out there. It's very well organized. It started the same way. It started with flights, traffic, uh, to this day, if you know what's going on. Seventeen seventy-four can be a nightmare, one oh five can be a nightmare. So there are scales. I don't, I do know that Montgomery County has a better than average handle on these events. Uh, I work with, my office is actually in Conroe. And most of my development clients are in that area. They, they look at things with differently. We, I mentioned social media, and I'll, I'll expand upon that a little bit. I think we as a community needed to do a better job of providing information through our social media services. I think that the, the commissioner's board, I think that the county judge, I think that city of Huntsville. I think that all entities, every single commissioner should have a viable page that allows comments. Back and forth so that she can get a feel for the community. I think that, that is the information. Uh, I'm thankful, recently, there's Office of Emergency Management put out an app. I use every single day. It provides me weather gauges, it provides me all kinds of things like that, community events. And we need to work upon that. Our community is changing. It's not going to, it's not possible anymore. We've got different people that have different experiences, they have different backgrounds, they come from different states, uh, things that you and I. So I welcome these people that are, and they've done right. And I think that we can all.
So the problem was the traffic, obviously. The horses and the trail ride weren't the problem, but the traffic. Is there something in Walker County? Maybe transportation where people can park somewhere and then be bussed?
So last year, it, it wasn't as many people, so everybody was able to fit on the property.
Right.
And the theme is family reunion, so everybody came, all of them. Way more people than last year, so we just ran out of space. Captors, horse trailers. Wagons just ran out of space, that's how they were. If we had more space, then probably that was what happened.
Right.
So the space was the issue.
Do you need places for people to park?
Yeah, bigger. Yeah.
And so that would all, if they pulled the permit, that could be addressed through the judge's office. And, and through the health, safety and everything else that goes along with that, set fifty-one code.
So is there a, like, if they want to move forward with. Whatever the property is on Roberts Road and pull the permits and everything. And then the locals that live on Roberts Road, is there a way for all of them to get together and be simple?
So what we'll have is when they fill out a form for mass gathering, we have another public hearing just like this. Citizens can come and address the court, the system that does it. You can tell us whatever you got and we can, we can weigh in on those. But when we have that, you'll have a, a. A person for health that comes in and says proper amount of, uh, wastewater, septic, quarter cans, water supplies. Uh, evacuation routes, transportation codes. You'll have a fire marshal that comes in and says occupa, uh, occupancy and all that setup. It's all in a big hearing. It's not just a, fill out this form. You'll have a fire marshal that comes in and says occupa-, uh, occupancy and all that setup. It's all in a big hearing. It's not just a, fill out this form, you get a permit. They go, they base it on, they'll go out there, look at the, the landscape, how it is, the roads, everything. And then it'll be an open hearing. We'll do public comments again then too.
And once he says court, he's not talking about commissioners here.
So it's a separate hearing. I'll, I'll preside over it and I'll have the fire marshal and health and safety person, and it's a separate hearing. So.
Can there be a public transportation?
Yep. That's all on the application. It's a couple page application that has to list all that out.
Does, does Wa, does Walker County have a fire marshal?
No, we'll, we'll address that in the next agenda item.
Well, how they, uh, they propose a ride, then they have a county fire marshal.
Who, I, I don't know who closed the, the ride and everybody said it was fire marshal. We don't have fire marshal. I know, I, we don't have.
Scene, and the sheriff can play, but you got a crime scene going on out there or whatever's happening or fire or this amount. Then they can halt things until that's over with.
I also heard y'all had a permit, but we know we didn't. So, I mean, we got stuff on both sides. So those are a bunch of hearsay. All right, anybody got anything else?
Hooking on a different hat, I can say the Crash Bridge Voluntary Fire Department did not shut that.
We, we ultimately, we ultimately had to, we lost the ability to get our EMS, uh, and fire trucks in and out. We did at one point also have a, uh, crime scene that had to be investigated and did not need to be tampered with. So we, we, when that occurred, uh, I will take responsibility for shutting the event down.
That was late that night.
That was late.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know who shut y'all down at three.
We're not talking about the traffic issue. We're talking about late, late in the night. But we, we ended up having to do that. Still took two days to get all the prop, uh, all their stuff off the property.
We shut it down at three, at three o'clock this year today.
Who shut it down?
What, what's your definition?
Hold on. Miss Wright.
I don't see where it matters. Uh, we, we're going back to what's in the past, you know, and, and moving forward, we've got to fix this. Y'all can sit here and argue about this all day long. You know, well, that's what I'm saying. Y'all consider and argue about it all day long, but what happened, happened. Ain't nothing you can do about it.
Okay. We thank y'all for coming in. We're gonna just jump right on to twenty-two. Let's go to twenty. Brandon's gotta leave.
Oh, Brandon gotta go? Okay.
Discuss and take action on potential conflict of interest concerns with Blal engineering reviewing plans for a state of Texas Grand Ranch.
I had this on the last court. I think we had pretty well discussion on it, uh, for me to, to move forward with this particular project. Twenty-two.
Me too. I just want the next one. I was gonna try to get the plan developed on Brandon.
And I got the lady from the safe house. They've been here all morning. So that's there in the hallway right there. So can we jump to that before we go to twenty? I had no idea that was gonna be that one. Y'all might have.
I, I, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail because we discussed it last time.
Hey, if y'all hold it down, we're, we're still, we got a meeting.
Ready again? Number twenty-two, we're only, uh, I had my concerns last time. I've had them ever since years back on, on Blal situation. And I personally think there's a conflict, uh, maybe not by law, but there is a little bit of a conflict in my opinion. And only in government would you probably see anything like this happening in free world. It wouldn't happen. So my motion is gonna be to, uh, let's see. Get our alternate, what's our alternate's name, Andy? GLS to review the plans for the estate of Texas Grand Ranch.
GLS?
Good one, the last purpose.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Saying it all in favor, raise your hand.
I've got a permit application that's under review for that, states of Texas Grand Ranch. That's my only current open application for that. That I understand is what we're talking about. There is an old development permit on a bridge. It crosses the creek. Also in Texas Grand Ranch, it crosses over here, the, the state. Still open. That Blal did the review. Blal offered for comments on the road whenever the city asks for no objection. There was also the road that's servicing the state of Texas Ranch. So there's not, this isn't about those two other open deals.
No.
Only about the development, the permit that's been applied for right now.
Yes.
And it wouldn't necessarily prohibit them from reviewing future applications. This is on this.
Just this particular.
That's what I mean.
That's what I understand. What, what are we saying that we don't want them to do? What, what's the?
Love, you wanna go back in a lot of detail about?
Well, not really, but here's my concern. Here's my concern. They did, we did an RFQ for engineering services. We selected a primary and a secondary. Based on qualifications. Well, I was our primary, GLS was our secondary. There's a second engineering group that's like a private, another, a thir, another private engineering group that's doing Grand Ranch. It's not like Blal is doing Grand Ranch and then reviewing themselves. That's the conflict that you can't have. That's the one you kick them out of and say, and they know that, that we can't design it and review ourselves. If the engineering company is designing Grand Ranch, is walking up here and fighting a complaint with me saying they are making me do something, like I said last time, illegal, immoral, or unethical. Those are the three things. Bring it up here and prove your case. And we say, hey, y'all need insurance for this, you're off. I, I think it's absolutely a hundred percent wrong when there's been zero proof of anything. Their job is to say, did you follow the engineering plans? Are these plans in compliance with our policies, our subdivision rate? That's their only job. So how's there a conflict? They're not saying do something that's wrong or look the other way, or you better do this, we're not gonna approve it. And if they are doing that, then that other company should be up here with a complaint. I think this is.
We've had our legal advice, look at twice already and, and give us the same same deal. There's nothing wrong there. Um, you know, um, the engineering board says there's nothing wrong.
Absolutely.
You know, so are we, uh, are we playing politics or are we doing what's right here?
Well, the engineering board definitely did give some, uh, stuff at the end and, and they said it didn't need to happen again, basically. Well, they're not, only, only in government where you see things like this happen anyway. Private industry would not happen in the first place because you did fire the firm. They actually in turn sued back and all kind of things went on. So I, I just, you know. Well, maybe so, but still. But you know, I mean, you would, you wouldn't have this happening in private industry at all.
We haven't, we have not got a single complaint from, I'll say from Spirit Point, whoever that, Light Point, Spirit Point, we have not got a single complaint brought to us saying Blal did this to us. We have not got one of those that this court filed with us. If I don't get one of them, there's absolutely no reason to, what could marginally be considered, I won't say it, but it's something that could bring discussion from Blal to us.
Leaves us very open ended.
I think it does, absolutely does. I think it absolutely does.
Well, I disagree with you.
Well, we're kicking out our most, we're, we're kicking out the, the group or proposing to kick out the group that we as a court reviewed called most qualified to do our work for us. That's what, that's all, for no other reason than we just, we just think that it's not, not a good idea. I, and I think that's, that's dangerous. And.
Well, and, and you know, I said it last time, I'll say it again. When you take, you know, you fire one engineer company, you take employees from that engineer company, create another engineer company and you hire them, hey, the court makes its decisions, oh, y'all, y'all vote to do it if you're fine, but it ain't gonna be.
I, if, if, if we're serious about it, I'll almost direct it to our district attorney's office to find any proof of malfeasance or anything and bring a recommendation back. But I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it just because we don't like them. That's, that's the terrible criteria. Can't use that.
I've got a question. Why, why does Walker County not have an engineer record for Walker County? And the second question would be how much we currently spending engineering services for review dollars?
Not enough to hire a full-time engineer.
Yeah, and we can't talk much about that one.
Yeah, yeah, it's kinda not on the agenda.
Jerry was a. Our, our, we spend more now because.
Yes, we do.
Anyhow.
Anybody got anything else?
Before you vote, before you vote, think long and hard about the legal position you're putting us in by not having a single piece of evidence to make your vote to kick these people out. Think about that. You have a backup so Blal doesn't design it and then review their own work. They can't design Grand Ranch and then review their own plan. That's the conflict. That's the absolute conflict. If one, if one set of engineers stamps it, the other guy goes behind him and reviews it. He doesn't design it, stamp it, review it and put another stamp behind it.
Our, our, our standard practice is under, with our two engineers, the reason we have two originally. Somebody's working on a project, we want a different firm review of the project.
Absolutely.
Or expressed to me. Number two is by the time you may have a capacity issue. So we may go to them, they may say, look, we can't get it done fast enough. We're too busy. And that gives us an option, cause somebody has to go to other than having to go through a whole other RFQ to find somebody to help us when we're gonna buy. And, and then in some rare cases, it may be that they say, we don't have the expertise, but the secondary firm has the expertise and they say for capacity wise, not by work size, but, uh, experience in that area, we don't really have the capacity to deal with that without going out. So, so normally that's, that's, they give us letters saying we've got, we're working on this project so that we know that they're on that project and we know that we're gonna have to go to our secondary for review. They send letters to the county judge saying, hey, we have potential conflict interest because we're tired to work on this project. So that's what we do all the time. I, I didn't mean to get in the middle of it. I just wanna make sure that cause I'm using them on some other stuff in there that this doesn't stop them. I've got another project that the same people are involved in, which is Deer Forest, which is a big project that we're coming near wrapping up. But I can still continue to use them on the other projects.
None, but exactly what you're saying is exactly right. Are they okay for Deer Forest, but not at Texas Grand Ranch? No, you can't say that. It's, it's either all right.
That's true.
That's the difference. They've already started those projects.
I just wanna make sure I didn't.
And they should continue on those projects.
That's what I, that's all I was trying to get clarity on.
So do we say that Spirit Point, do we say the Spirit Point can't review? You can't say that. If, if, let's say Spirit Point was our backup and Blal was their primary, we're gonna say, gosh, Blal designed this, better not give it to Spirit Point. You, you can't do that. You gotta be very careful what you raise your hand on.
There's issues that can come up and.
And tell them, and I love you, I bet, tell them to bring them. Tell them to bring something illegal that asked, that Blal has asked them to do.
It don't have to be illegal.
Morals don't count where we're standing here. They don't have legal standing. Morals don't have legal standing, legal.
The only government, the only place this would happen is in government.
Absolutely. And, and government is structured that way.
Free world, it would not happen at all. You can just move on to a different and go on. So my vote is still the same. I've raised my hands to vote for this. So I may be the only one.
Anybody got anything else?
Yes. The third issue is that every licensed engineer is in Texas under Article fifty practicing engineering has a license granted by the state of Texas. So why does it, when you go to the doctor and you get a prescription for eloquence or whatever your prescription is, do you have to go to a second doctor to verify that's the right medication to take? And so my thoughts are that once an engineer has the credit, the county engineer is not gonna be looking through every single calculation. Or every single thing, such as hydrology or how many, you know, three hundred milligrams per yada, yada, and on, on site sanitary facility systems. So the oversight, I think is a redundancy.
Yeah, but we, we get pages of you did this wrongs when, when whoever the reviewing engineer is or Blal or GLS, we get, we get pages back of no, 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 no. So, and we don't have the time or the expertise in house to go through and do that. So that's, that's why we have, that's why we have a secondary backup, just to ensure that it's right.
But again, that, that licensure group, whether it may be Blal engineers or Spirit Point or Light Point or whatever, I do know they're uh, arbitration. I, I, everybody knows that if you work in business whatsoever. So that automatically, I know that every time that we go through the city of Huntsville, there's a Mark McClure who basically, you know, keeps the red pen business, uh, you know, fully funded. Um, he, he has his own license. He has his own opinion. If you, if you hire ten, ten different engineers, you will get ten complete, uh, differences of opinion about.
I totally agree with that.
If there is a, if there is a Walker County regulations, and there is, cause I've read it the last forty years, if those regulations are in place and those qualifications are already there and that engineer has his license to practice in the state of Texas, why are we going through the redundancy and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars letting somebody else that went to a different college? Say, that's not the way we do. We don't use the rational formula. We have to use the modified correction. Or we have to use the SEC system, whatever that may be, and get that automatically. Or all the pages stand. Is it qualified with Walker County regulations? I mean, anybody, minimal amount of training and effort.
That's what we review. There's engineering standards, you know, they're just like in the Huntsville, we're checking to make sure. A, in the planning stage and B, oversight. You're just, I'm gonna make sure that the.
All right, we'll call a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Oh, absolutely. I thought, yes.
Yeah. Motion carries twenty-two. We'll go back to consent agenda. We're gonna pull number one. Five?
Five, yes. I make the motion to approve the consent agenda, removing number one and number five.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Oh, no. Nobody. Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I didn't end up. All right, no, number one. I approve those with amendments. Wasn't saying it all in favor, raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Motion carries number five.
Judge, um, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I have some friends here from the safe house. If y'all wanna come up front here real quick, and we have a proclamation. And. I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation twenty-two four dash O one, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control and or abuse, including abuse of children and the elderly. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas survivors of domestic violence themselves have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by the domestic violence program such as the safe house, I do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Walker County. And I urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs to work towards eradicating domestic violence, improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims in our society as a whole. So with that, Judge, I make the motion to approve agenda number five as presented.
Second.
Move and sing it all in favor, raise your hand.
We're gonna get a picture. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Comes with a pin this time.
Actually, I'm seeing. Block them. Okay. No, you.
I see them blows down.
Yeah. You want some of that?
Yeah. I'll let you know on.
Alright.
One, two, three.
Gotta go. We got one more picture, brother?
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate what you do.
Talk to Bill about it. Okay.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate y'all staying. You get to see the ducks all the time. Hey, he's local right now. He's a brown's leaving.
Anyway, I broke his ankle. Kenny Wayne.
I, I, I haven't been on.
Number twelve, discuss and take action on a two-year commercial lease agreement between First National Bank of Huntsville and Special Prosecution Unit. Walker County for the Huntsville office location. Mr. Cho.
Morning, Jack.
Morning.
Uh, just here to ask for your approval of our lease with First National Bank. As you rinse out space there.
No money, right?
Your money. Sounds good. By a deal budget and uh. So, and nothing's changed. That's, that's the really good news.
Motion to approve agenda twelve.
I'll second that.
Moving, saving it all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jack.
Careful, you get Ronnie and Bill.
I'll be there.
I guess so.
Number thirteen, discuss and take action on the Criminal District Attorney's Chapter Fifty-nine Annual Report. Mr. Durham.
Okay. This is our annual report to the Attorney General's Office concerning asset forfeiture cases. Last year, we actually only initiated one lawsuit. We disposed of two, so I've met no loose down overall.
Alright. Like a motion we accept number thirteen, the chapter fifty-nine annual.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your right hand. Motion case. EMS number fourteen, present EMS statistics for July first, twenty twenty-three, October first, twenty twenty-three.
Hello. So, um, I'm just gonna give you an update on our third quarter, which is July through October. County quarters, a sixty-year for us to go January through January. So we finished up our third quarter. We're actually starting fourth quarter training today. Um, so between July first and October first or September thirtieth, we did um sixty-eight hundred. Um, I'm sorry, sixty-eight hundred transports so far so year. Um, between July and October, we had one thousand four hundred and seventy-five calls for service. With two thousand two hundred and ninety-two actual patient contacts. So, you know, car wrecks, things like that, bigger events will have multiple patients or one call slip. Um, we've transported sixty-five percent of those patients, eighteen percent were uh non-transports. And seventeen percent are kind of a other category of defloam or they weren't there when we got on scene, et cetera. Um, so August was our busiest month with eight hundred and eight patient contacts. Uh, between this time, we hit level zero twenty-six times. Um. Kind of with every, with the slowdown of the network email, things like that. Um, the guy that kind of helps us with this, I don't have like the chunk of time of that. Um, so hopefully I can get that. For you guys um on the next quarter. Um, August again was our biggest, biggest month for level zero. Um, not sure if that had to do with like the end of summer, school starting back, more traffic. Um, but fifteen times in the month of August, we had zero trucks available. Um, we mutually aided other agencies nine times. Again, August, we. Um, had six mutual aids. That's generally to Trinity County. Um, we do go to Montgomery County a little bit. So our average shoot time, that is from the time we get dispatched to time out of the station to go on the call is fifty-three seconds. That's what we're sitting at. And it takes approximately eleven minutes and four seconds to arrive at a residence. Um, forty-two percent of that, um, we got there in eight minutes or less. So that's actually really good for us considering how many calls are rural and whatnot. Um. We generally spend about seventeen minutes and fifty-one seconds on. Scene before we transport the patient and the total turnaround time is just under an hour. Um, our primary impressions um for this quarter, chest pain was our number one. No injury, no complaint. Again, that'll come out if somebody else calls an ambulance. For you and you're like, why are you here? There's something wrong with me. Car wrecks, things like that where we show up on scene and. Like, nothing's wrong. I don't need to be. Um, that came in at number two, um, followed by abdominal pain. Injuries of any type and then generalized weaknesses if at work. Um, this is where we're transporting our patient. Um. Just under ninety percent, they're still staying here in Huntsville. Um, HMH is. Does a really good job of not keeping us on the wall too long. They're keeping a lot more patients, so. Um. We do keep the majority of our patients there in HMH. Um, Conroe is number two, HCA Conroe. They got a hundred and eleven patients um in that three-month period. Um, we go to Methodist, the Woodlands, Herman, the Woodlands, and St. Luke's as well. They have some comprehensive, they're all three comprehensive stroke centers and Herman. Um, is also a level two stroke center, or I'm sorry, a level two trauma center. So. Conroe and Herman, the Woodlands are level two trauma centers, so. The traumas that we can't keep here in town, they'll go to the two places. Um, Texas Children's is a good resource for it. We only flew out. Four patients, which means we're caring for our patients and keeping them here or transporting them. So that's really good. Um, and then back in the spring, we implemented transporting patients to Pet C and Conroe. So it was one of those psychiatric patients that they're not blocking down. HMH, um, we will take them to Conroe. So that's a good resource. That's where they need to be. They don't need to be in ER.
Rachel, was, was that in the quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then these are just um PR events that we completed in this timeframe. Uh, there were a few more. With schools and whatnot, uh, but these are the big ones that we did. Um, touch a truck and cat safety bash for both. Whereas um the boy scouts as well and the way it's all fears as well. So we're getting out there. We love to be. With the community and teaching the community and helping them. So, um, that's just kind of what we've been up to. The past three months. So hopefully next quarter when I come back. We'll dive a little bit deeper. This month has been weird with all the stuff, as y'all know, so.
It's been a lot going on.
Yes, so I just wanted to get y'all something and let y'all know what we've been up to with our fall long since ever.
Do you have any updates on your ambulance delivery times?
Um, so they, two of them that have been on order for over a year, they have been numbers, which means they exist.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. Um, hopefully. I, I am not getting up hopes of they'll be here before the end of the year, but spring sometime, hopefully. Um, and then. If we can get the newest one put in there, maybe they'll mysteriously come up with a third. The number that we can have and we can get three at the same time. So.
Nice.
That's where we're at from now, so.
Alright.
Just, just to comment, I've. Had the pleasure of moving over for ambulances recently. And seem to be driving very safely through the intersections.
Good, good.
A little more than I've seen in the past or not, not since.
We are beginning and of course, which is an emergency vehicle operator's force. Um. They gave one here several years ago. Um, it's, it's really hard to coordinate everybody through, but we have a lot of people that have not. Been in EMS before or a fire department or any other entity that. Um, drives big trucks, so hopefully we get that locked in for November and so they are all more safer.
Yeah, they appear to be doing good, is what I'm saying. It's, it's, you know.
I like to hear that, so.
So just making a comment, because I, I see something good. So.
Thank you.
You always hear about the bad, the bad always shows up.
We're trying.
Bye, thanks, Rachel.
Project. Number fifteen, discuss and approve change order one to a statement of work to Arctic IT for service related to the move. Of the financial system from commercial cloud to government cloud, up to the amount of eighty thousand dollars to be paid from budgeted project funds. That's Alan, you out there?
I am. Uh, this, we're beginning the second phase of the project. We've got the um. Uh, government cloud set up in Walker County's name. We're at the point now where we're getting ready to actually. Move toward a go-live. We will begin by getting uh. The data over there, doing user testing and then move forward on that. So we need a change order for that step of the work. And this should get us through the end of the project.
Yeah, I made. I make the motion to approve agenda item fifteen as presented.
So.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thanks, Patricia.
Number sixteen, discuss and take action to approve pricing of solicitation number C two-three-six-zero. Dash two-three dash zero-zero-eight, high density polyurethane for gated pipe from Coburn's.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Miss Cheryl.
There we go.
We're good. How about you?
We're surviving. So, uh, we got pricing uh for open purchase order from Coburn's. Uh, it's the same as it was um last year. We just have to get it approved.
I mean, there's shows to be delivered. They didn't have a pickup. Because you, no, nobody wants them anyway. Their parking lot's bad. Get them to deliver it to me.
We can't get in there with a trailer anyways.
Everything stayed the same, no red.
Yes, sir. There were no increases, no decrease.
That's your motion. I'll make a motion we accept number sixteen. Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number seventeen, discuss and take action for approval of solicitation C two-three-six-zero dash two-three dash zero-one-seven emotions.
So we um sent the solicitation out. Uh, for, because it was one line item that was not originally. Well, it was bid on, but it was deemed not to warrant it.
Not the right stuff.
So uh P two emotions, we do have a discretionary exemption with them. And they had submitted this pricing for that solicitation. And uh I'm requesting approval uh that this meets. Uh, that line of solicitation that I don't have to go back out to that, that could take that and y'all can approve this pricing for.
I make the motion to approve agenda item seventeen as presented.
It also has no increase in pricing, just saying.
That's nice. Second.
Moving, saying it all, favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Eighteen, presentation from Eddie Morgan PE and Jacob Edwards PE with GLS Engineering on jail plumbing project.
It's, uh-huh. I have their thumb drive.
So you just have the people?
I have the people.
Probably, you, you can see my rep right out there.
Whoops.
Well, they ain't saw those vests. That's not it.
Back talk, Cheryl.
Are you guys the GLS guys I was talking about a while ago?
Yes.
Some of them. So how's the jail going?
Well, we, you know, we've got. Okay, so the actions we had are divided into three parts. For hot spring, main one, second. Plumbing repairs, because we had horrible problems with um corroding way, and I'll show you that when we. And upgrading the water conditioning system. Actually adding to address the problem. And the third one is automatic shut-off, so pressure trying to put something down the toilet. So this is probably this one. Run valves and you can see the joint there between the valve and the pipe. Could deal corrosion and after knocked out with emergency for a lot of time. Kind of comes in slugs. To an excitement. So we, it seems to be indicated that we're in content. Because it's the water soft, it's not working and you're getting just calcium through. It'll, it'll build up inside the pipe. Obviously that breaking pipe, it looks like water is in there. But, but the. Water, the water, it's quite a plan. It's actually. Six and a half miles up. Hell, there's no takeoff between there before you get to the jail or age of town. We're wondering if we're gonna get slow sporing that. That's what it looks like. That's a, that's one of the things indicated by some corrosion. Day next time. Um, and so how does it affect the water soft? The resin in the beds like birdshot. Calcium compounds. Magnesium and calcium stick to those pellets, the outside of, and then the ground thing, every case it pushes it all out. What's going on there? Now, high chlorine content. And then this has happened a few times, but you look over in the tank where the pellets are and it looks like rice pudding. Because it's dissolving the plastic pellets. You, you haven't changed them too often. And the pellets can last three to eight years and they get. Years down, you know, and I'm just so, so out of that. So we're, we're looking at a different time. And there's other. The slugs cor- chlorine that you're seeing there. Is probably, you know, related to the cor- and the copper pipe is worst of all. That number. That's the wrong copper pipe. I'm chlorine content. And next time. And this is what we look at doing. We have an offer from Culligan, they're redoing the water soft. And then we, we add a carbon filter to get chlorine now. So it's not, it's not much, I'm sorry about the paint one, you know, that was red in the hole there, two hundred and forty thousand for the. Carbon rebuild, which pretty extensive. Their uh. Carbon filter, their carbon filter is huge. We're not fitting the building. We had to build another building, the house and. Et cetera. So we went down to a different product that we get in natural soft. I'll tell you how that works in there. Now, stand on filter and that'll fit in the building. We had one to take the Culligan stuff off and it took there. Price of maybe eighty-seven thousand or forty-eight thousand. So we designed around the natural soft water soft and filter card itself. Hey, the, the filtering. Brand new, well, not brand new, but it's advanced technology compared to treating of the resin. It works like your catalytic converter car. So what it does, it breaks down the. Uh, calcium compounds to, you see the video. Picture on the lamp. Size of it versus the little aggregates there. So it breaks down something. It's not corrosive. It's not harmful humans at all. It's a different form of calcium or that. And it's non-sacrificious. So we lay it and it's gonna sit in there for a year or two. And only attention needs is when the surface. I surrender. To compare that to your. But water filter. So then, and then this was a carbon filter system. It's two of them where you can, you can never, you can do not have to stop the water supply. You bow off one side and change the cartridge out, bow off the other side. Designed for the design flow, but one side is also designed for an pressure drop. Where you change the carbon filter. Next slide, show you what they look like. So they're kind of like a household filter. Like they're really big. They're six inches by forty-eight inches, we told them. They'll last about a year. Then it's happened this, and then they have a pressure gauge. Actually, two pressure gauges. When you see differential pressure going up, you know, you need to change. So you don't have to change them every year that I saw.
What are the, what are these costs, these filters? Each one?
Three hundred dollars.
Trend like.
Twelve, uh, six in each. It does cost. I say you're not beating with the resin, which is, I don't know, the first time I should have pointed it out earlier. They're really expensive.
So, so y'all are taking, talking about taking the whole prison bed out?
Yeah, we'll dig away with it. Natural soft be overhead two of them. Again, you can go through one or you change it. Or dress the others. Needed to change out. Non-sacrificial. It's kind of like, like I say, like the catalytic converter car. It not really gives anything up. This costs reaction. Right now in the county. And this, I'm just gonna go through this really quick. This is a breakdown. I mentioned, thank you. It was plumbing repairs. Got a bunch of motor five valves there. Bunch of isolation valves there. Mixing valves, there's three of them there. So a little bit of revision that we noticed would help. Uh, vein autonomy over there. Installation missing a lot of places. Uh, there's alternate, I want, what I had. At some point drains, there's a bunch areas where they go to work on it. The second floor is not being drained well. You break the pipe, it just gets flooded. So they go up there and break, break fittings to let the air in the drain. So we're gonna put asphalt valve and split valve this area. Go back to those work. I'll probably say I've been great some. Okay, the next option. Moving on, natural soft water patient system. We just looked at carbon pre-filtered, filtered. And removing the existing COVID system, as you mentioned, priority. And, and those has values. I'm still. The last package is about upgrading the. Stacks like, so you know, upgrading automatics. Stakes like, so, you know, upgrading the automatic. Or it's just right here, just two main valves on the second floor, so. Yeah, there's still residual pressure valves, like flush products or something, so. So, and they're also located away where they must, so we're gonna need those. You had an alternative of, you know, last week groups of cell. It does do with effect like six or eight cells about, you know. In the automated system, they have it actually set up to that. So it'll be some programming, which we don't have to do a lot of work with automation. So the person can hit a button. For the water sample on sale, and actually shut that. Order offices up. That's what they did, it's hard to see it. So we're really fast, I know y'all were tired, so. So be thinking if you have questions on.
I wouldn't know what to ask. I'm just being honest with you.
Is there a way we can get a copy of this, so we can look at this?
Oh, this, this.
It's hard to read from up here.
Okay, yes, that verb is so long. So I can leave this with you, which is my copy, need to make up.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, if you send us, get Cheryl to send us a copy of it.
Either way.
So we, I mean, cause I. You went pretty fast for me. I was better with the pictures.
Makes it pretty slow.
I do appreciate y'all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, we appreciate y'all coming down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all again. Thank you, Miss Cheryl, for getting the book, get them down here.
Anything on eighteen?
That's all I got on it.
Number nineteen, discuss and take action on C two, three, six, zero dash, two, three, dash, zero, zero, nine, jail plumbing project.
I don't have any backup on it. Anybody got backup on?
Uh, no, this, that was a solicitation, the presentation was to complete that solicitation.
Yeah.
Uh, to approve the presentation, so they can get invoices and get paid.
Okay.
For what they've done to current.
Correct. Taking action on what they presented.
It's just to be able to pay them for where they're at today. Okay, I'll make a motion for that to, uh. Take action on C two, three, six, oh, dash, two, three, dash, zero, zero, nine, plumbing project.
Moving saying it all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twenty, discuss and take action on health and safety. Code, chapter seven, five, one, gathering.
I want to point out the one good thing here for Quentin stopping. I can see him standing up, but. Is that the commissioners court doesn't have a lot to do with this code.
First line.
It all lies with, uh, our county judge, sheriff, the health.
Right.
Authority for the county and the fire marshal that we do look at appointing.
Right, and so I wanted to run through a couple of things, but a lot of it's already come out. Uh, and just so you know, Mr. Durham and I have met with the county judge, we have met with the sheriff's office, we have not met with the county health authority yet. And, um, there is no county mar- fire marshal, which is the actual only duty of the commissioners court. In chapter seven fifty one, if there is no county fire marshal to designate. A replacement or someone to stand in that capacity. And, um, I, I did see the Montgomery County, interestingly enough, Montgomery County's policy was adopted two thousand eleven. It's old. The code hasn't changed. Smith County's got excellent material as well. The county, the county judge's office actually has a, an application for a permit. Which our office has reviewed, we made a few recommendations for some minor changes, though those were made. That application. Clearly follows the statutes of seven fifty one. And, uh, provides some guidance. It also establishes some, uh, application fees. That the county judge's office can review and decide whether to keep them or not, but. Uh, the code. And even in the, I'm not sure in our application, I'm not sure if it even references it in Montgomery County or the Smith County. Application, but the code itself gives guidance to the sheriff's office. And to the county health official, a health authority. On what they are supposed to be reviewing in terms of compiling their report to give the county judge. Procedure in seven fifty one is that someone applies at least forty five days before they begin to promote. Their event, so that's the key phrase, they can't start promoting it till they've already received their permit. So no promotion before a permit. But they, when they apply, the judge will make three copies available. One will go to this designated for the fire marshal. There is no specific statutory guidance on how they make their designation. But obviously, someone who's familiar with that kind of. Work would know kind of what they need to do. But when the county health authority and the county sheriff receive their copy. They are specifically directed by chapter seven fifty one to specific. Guidance, D P S has guidance for mass gatherings. The Department of Health and Human Services has guidance for mass gatherings. And so the county health authority and the sheriff are, and we told the sheriff's office this. They need to look at that and follow that. They compile a report, turn it into the judge, judge sets a hearing at least ten days in advance of the event. And of course, remember, nobody's supposed to be promoting anything, so one would anticipate farther in advance. Because they haven't even promoted it yet, but, um, would set that hearing at the, those three individuals will be there. Any citizen who has a concern about the gathering, pro, con, either way, would be able to come there, the promoter would be able to be there. And that hearing, if, if, if you want to have it in this room, you can certainly have it in this room. The, the four of you get to sit out here with me and enjoy the, enjoy the. And, uh, but essentially, that's the process. The reality is, the county has had that application for some time. There was a clear miscommunication with the event, I'm gonna recover all that, oh, that, that was miscommunicated. Any mass gathering. Anyone that meets those requirements and the code lays out what it is, but they expect it to be a mass gathering. Look, if, if someone wants to avoid having to get a permit, close their doors at twenty five hundred people. Don't let another person in, it's not a mass gathering, and county's got no say. Um, there are other, obviously, there are other laws, there are other statutes, there are other ways to make sure that things are safe and orderly. But I do believe, and I think I've heard that from all of you, and I'm glad to hear it. Seven fifty one is not there to prevent mass gatherings. Seven fifty one is to make sure that they are safe and orderly. And that's the intent there, so, um, like I said, this is the judge's thing, we visited with him, he's eager and ready to go on this. I don't know if that's the right words, but that's, that's where we are on this.
But you said you, you hadn't visited with Dr. Will yet.
No, we haven't, we haven't had a chance to.
No, I called this morning and visited with him a few minutes, and he's had some ideas, things in his mind, but I wanted to see if y'all had visited with him, and, and he said that you have.
We haven't, and in fact, I was gonna let the judge be the one to handle it, well, they had totally been telling it now. But my, the bottom line is, there, there is guidance, I haven't pulled it myself from the Department of Health and Safe, Health and Human Services Commission, they have. They have guidance, or they're required by law to have guidance for mass gathering for their medical. Authority to review, to implement that. The judge, by the way, can also do his own investigation, he's not limited to just those three reports, he can do his own. And, um, so it's just one of those things where the idea is let these events occur, they're, they're beneficial for the most part. Let them occur in a safe and orderly manner.
Yeah, well, I, I've said it before, I, I think this whole court's for property rights, none of us will. If I'm sitting with one, I don't know who they are. If I am, we're gonna have a conversation after court.
And it came up in the, the discussion item and the public comments and so forth, the, uh. This applies to any gathering that qualifies for it. I, I will say that Montgomery County one, uh. Has what I will call extra statutory provisions, don't know the authority for some of the things in there. I would always, that's something that we'll visit with the judge to give him legal advice on those things.
That was some of my questions on it, reading it, it looked like, I mean, they had the finding part with multiple days. I did not read that in the code. It, it's specifically stated that they could charge each day was a, was a.
Um, so, yeah, that's.
I didn't have a legal.
That's the district attorney's office, and yes, uh, uh, the. The actual offense, the way I read the offense is to promote.
Yeah.
A mass gathering. And so, um, it, the unit prosecution is promotion.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I haven't done a lot of deep dive into that, we're not eager to pro- to prosecute anybody for any past event. But we'll do what we need to do, um, going forward, but it's promotion, it's not the actual holding of an event. And something that one of the people asked about earlier that I do want to make clear, seven fifty one also makes it clear. That once a mass gathering has been permitted and is in action. Those same three reporters that the judge involved. Have a duty to make sure that the plan that was approved that gained the permit is still being followed. And the judge has the authority to revoke a permit. At which point the mass gathering's gotta stop. So, that, that, that is one of the things that. It's, it's kind of an ongoing monitoring to make sure someone follows the plan essentially, but.
So it is, I guess, since we're all here, is it the intent to revise our existing mass gathering, or we just go.
Technically speaking, you don't have. Your one, your one duty that does need to be done, this county does not have a county fire marshal, is to figure out who you're gonna name as your designate. Because in light of everything today and in recent events, I would anticipate the judge's office will be receiving applicants. Applications for permits for mass gatherings.
Pretty soon.
And he needs to know who to give that third copy to, who the replacement for the fire marshal is. And I, I, I realize you may not be ready to name that person today, so while this is a discuss and take action item. It, it could be that, and you're not limited, and that's, that's another good point, there's nothing in the statute that limits you to picking someone in the county.
Yeah, but there, there's been.
Fire and T call, don't they?
Uh, I've had some.
There's no conversation about that, you, you are designating as a court someone that you believe could adequately perform. The necessary duties, and, and the code lays it out, they have to review this and for, for fire safety and, and, and that's what their purpose is, so. You may, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm done, I'll be quiet, I'll let y'all discuss, and you may not be ready today to nominate someone or to, to vote on someone. You may, you may not, but that's what, that's what, other than, other than that, I don't know of anything else that you can do.
I don't know. That. Um, that we don't have a say in the policy, it may not be in there legally. But I don't think we just say, hey, judge, go write us a mass gathering permit, I don't think we do that, we, I mean, we.
No, I think we say, go write.
No, but our, our permit process we have right now.
Unless he wants us.
It, it's so general, I mean, that, that's what I liked about Montgomery County's. It's, when, when they walk in and they say, I'm gonna have three thousand people, Montgomery County gives them a twenty four page document.
If I may interrupt you. That's coming from the, the Department of Health and Human Services Commission's guidance. So they basically have taken it out of that commission's report and incorporated it into theirs.
Okay, so when the next guy comes in and says. I'm gonna have a mass gathering, we need to give that person a packet. That says, this is what we expect from a checklist. This is what you need to do, it can't be our three page application, I'll make sure the traffic's okay, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, and then turn it back in. And leave it up to somebody, judge or whoever, to say, uh, you're good, but Bob, you're not, it has to be.
If, if I may, the report, the application actually asks that person to submit. Detailed plans. That will then be given to the three reporting agencies.
Right.
Do their analysis, I hear what you're saying.
So then what they will do, though, they will go to their checklist and make sure it's there, and if it's not, you know, call them back and say, oh, by the way. So why not give everything upfront, why not give them twenty five pages and say, bring all this and you're good.
So I will say this with, I understand your, your capacity as a commissioner and a member of this court.
I'm, I'm not like that, I'm a citizen that. I'm gonna put on the Walker County Fair. I'm gonna come in and fill it out, what do I need to do?
Uh, and I.
Or I'm gonna put on the rail, the trail ride next year, what do I need to do, we'll fill this three page application out, and we'll let you know where you messed up. And, and da, 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 until you get it right and you can't get it.
All, all I'm trying to say is I appreciate your comment, and as a commissioner, you have a duty to your constituents, and that's what you're voicing. And these, every one of your statements should be considered as a recommendation to the county judge. To evaluate the application and what kind of information he puts in there. It's not a, it's not a we thing, it's a him thing. But it's, it's, it's certainly good, it's certainly good information for the judge to consider, and, and our office would recommend that he actually consider that information as well.
Well, let me throw a little scenario at you, Quentin, since you're on a roll today. It's all good. Just say these guys say, well, I got twenty four hundred and ninety nine people out there, and it's clear to you that they got five thousand people.
So the, the issue here, the way the code is written, it says to promote what is expected. Or what becomes a mass gathering. So a person could tell you, I'm not gonna have a mass gathering, we're gonna stop at twenty five hundred, we're not going over. But the moment they go over, it has become a mass gathering, and it is in fact, then a, it was a violation to promote it. That, that's what.
But that number, you know, I mean, how are you gonna determine that, is what I'm asking, because they're not gonna tell you the truth.
Conversation with the sheriff's office has been had for that very thing.
Okay.
In Montgomery's, they, they talk about tickets and stuff like that, you know, and, and so. I mean, there, there's a lot of things in the Montgomery County one that I do agree with, but I, I do agree that it's all on the judge, whatever he wants in it to a certain extent. Um, but you know, the question I had about the, the fees and stuff, the, the finding, you know, they took multiple days, you know, I don't know if I agree or disagree with it. Or what the law says, but, you know, you get to counting tickets and, and, I mean, it even goes into telling them they need how many packages of neosporin they need. And Band-Aids, I mean, it's, it's all in there, and, and so it may be a little overkill.
But if you put that in there, they know they have to have it, so why make them guess, I'm gonna have three neosporins. I have plenty of neosporin, well, how much is that, is it a gallon?
Still goes back to the judge.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's crap, we are.
But how far do you take it?
Court up here, and we're, I can't believe that we're in charge of nine hundred square miles where the judge go, or the sheriff goes, nine hundred square miles. I haven't, I mean, how many miles, we're in charge of everything except it's, we have no say.
We need to talk to your legislator, because that's what the law is.
I mean, but, once again, this kind of goes back to the governance part, can we force a policy? No. But can we say, you know, three pages ain't enough, three pages wouldn't cure that.
I think we got that from you already, believe me, we know, we know we need more than three.
Why not over, why not give them a twenty five page document and say?
There's more than one way to give them that information. And, and like I said, it's all, it's, that's, the code is very specific, the, the Department of Health and Human Services Commission has a guidance. And that can be incorporated either directly from them, or can be reworded, however, that needs to be done.
So, that's all I'm saying, that.
Your concern can be addressed without any problem at all, and it's certainly something that the judge will. Because it would make it more efficient, because then they know what they, they, they can already build their plan according.
Absolutely, when they bring it in, it's.
But we cut down on your time.
I've checked every box on here.
Yeah.
And you get away from, how come, Harry, I got to do it this way, and he got to do it that way. You can't have that.
But, but you, you are aware, and I, I know it, it's chafing at times, but. There are things in the code that belong specifically to a county judge.
I understand.
And this is one of them. And so it is his responsibility, but I know he's, oh, he's listening.
I'm taking notes, Bill.
You know, you can certainly weigh in with your opinion on it, and I think it's important that you do that, because you are. You, you're voted into your office for your constituents, and you're looking out for your constituents, so I, I feel like you have a role to play there in that way.
And in these, yeah, true, yeah, and these people.
That, that packet was in y'all's work last time, when y'all did the whole application a year or so ago. I got the file folder when y'all made the application.
I don't remember the application coming this way.
Well, I got it up there.
Y'all voted on it?
I will say, in terms of the, uh, the criminal offense, like I said, that's entirely the VA's office, and that, we're gonna follow the code on that. And it talks about promotion of, of, of an event, that's what it talks about, so I don't know, uh.
Uh, it, it was just, it's something that kind of stuck out.
Yeah, you know, so my input on it would be when they walk out that door. They should know absolutely everything required of them to turn that application back in.
They gotta figure out how to get them in the door first.
That's what I'm saying, when the guy.
That's the problem.
I mean, you can get that.
We ain't done it yet.
Well, because we haven't said anything. My Montgomery County been doing it for a dozen years, so maybe a phone call to them.
Be advised, and I believe the judge has already taken steps to do that. The the application and some information is being loaded on the county website, which is. You know, it's one of the ways you let people know what they need to do.
Right.
We do know that that many times promoters. Look, this is state law, so it's in every count.
Right.
So if they promoted any number of events, they they. Got a pretty good idea. They need to be calling the county judge, but in in a default position, many times they called the county sheriff's office. So we visited with the sheriff's office because they got calls. And we need them to direct those calls properly to the county judge's office. So I think. Uh, somebody said it earlier, sometimes you, sometimes you mess up and you learn from it, you know, if that's something going forward.
Absolutely.
We should be seeing that happen.
Right.
And and I and I also agree with. Part of what you were saying there is. The the judge's office needs to be making these decisions in a uniform, consistent manner. And that that is something that, again, that came legal advice, but already the judge is already there ahead of us on that. So I feel like we're all, we're on the same page on that as well.
Okay, so our role as a court now, we're just done. Until something shows back up.
Well, you you do need to.
Yeah, we gotta do a fire marshal.
Or a fire marshal.
Well, not a fire marshal, but a designate.
Uh, yes, a designate in lieu of a fire.
Yes.
Yes, that's what you're, you'll need to do that. And and the sooner the better. You may not be ready today, but maybe ready in two weeks, but.
Yeah, and then maybe, you know, we need to talk about that. I mean, if we got any ideas who could be or would be or then get with those folks. And I know you're looking at folks out there, but.
Guess the list of names and when.
I had a, I had a conversation in the past um. With uh. Our chief uh, Matt about it. And I don't wanna venture out and say yes or no, but that's a possibility if they're willing to.
I might be the first person to ask what's, if they're interested in it, you know, if if you're looking at it.
Just for the fact that I think it's uniform, you know, I mean, I don't know legally how we would do it if if he's willing to do it.
Does hustle have a, don't they have a separate fire marshal besides Greg?
Greg, I don't think Greg's named a fire marshal. He's not Tico certified.
Greg is a fire marshal.
Greg is a fire marshal.
That that was, that was my.
Yeah.
Isn't, but that's been a year ago, you know, um. Uh, like I said, it might be an avenue to look into. That would be. You know, sufficient for no more than we're gonna use. I mean, it's not gonna be a lot, I wouldn't think.
Right, the fairgrounds are probably gonna be the most that we use it is with them and. They should have everything in place. So once it's kind of inspected, I would think it would almost be like a rubber stamp for that guy.
We have to. I think it's worth a conversation with him and they need to find out how you, how to inter vocal.
Yeah, I I'll hover out for this issue for one, just one thing and and Quentin, you making way on this. EST two established a fire marshal's office. Because the county doesn't have one, and that's mainly for, we went through that, the subdivision regulations and all the stuff that's happening down in our area to make sure builds are in compliance and so on and so forth. But also, I, what I'm just worried about, if if we don't, is it the designate with that? It's once the county establishes a fire marshal's office, then we go away. I just wanna make sure we don't go away without our job being picked up and.
Correct, yes.
I just wanna make sure.
Right, that's that's a, to be very, very clear about it. You are not naming a county fire marshal unless that's what you choose to do. All you're doing is designating someone to perform the duties. For mass gatherings only. The 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 investigation and report for a mass gathering report to the county judge, that's all you're doing there. You're not, it would not cause the fire marshal.
It wouldn't be a county fire marshal.
Exactly, they are not a county fire marshal.
Just for the courts, uh, like our fire marshal's office, I'm not the fire marshal. Let's. We did it as a different branch, Chance Gardner as a fire marshal assistants. Uh, Darren Parker, there's four people in that fire marshal's office at the fire department. And, you know, we don't review mass gatherings or anything like that, but anything that y'all need to help on or whatever, I'm sure that they would be. I intentionally kept that out from under my bill because of what I do and for a living and they, I don't have any.
All right, thank you, Jake.
Yes, sir. Sir, I just had one question. I know that we've been talking about the mass gatherings and all that. I still have one issue in the back of my mind, which is. Dude, I I understand it deals with. But what about the trans and everything else?
The what?
Transport, display, gathering of all of the livestock. What is that from?
We we visited with the sheriff's office on that too. That that's actually separate and apart from mass gatherings. Not all mass gatherings involve livestock. So that's a separate issue that the sheriff's office will be, will be looking into.
All right, we're really all.
Say, you said a comment about the fairgrounds and stuff, uh. From my understanding, like. Montgomery County Fairgrounds, they don't have their own. Uh. Mass gathering permit per se. Each promoter or organization comes into. That facility does their own.
Right.
Well, it's because it's owned by the county. Montgomery County is owned by.
Any, any event. That is, any promoter of an event will need to secure. Secure a a permit. It's not, it's not a facility, whether it's a county-owned one or whether it's a five oh one C, it's not the facility. Just as, just as, the trail ride one that we discussed earlier, it wasn't the property owner. It's the promoter who has to secure the permit. So it is individualized permits for each event.
And and that's where I was gonna go with, there's, there's a lot of already pre uh. And there's already dates out there that are already getting promoted, that are gonna meet that criteria. I mean, I know some that, yeah, I got three or four committees, I think that that are right up, uh, gonna meet that criteria that are. Uh, talking about, you know, they're already promoting, they're already.
And in light of that, you know, this is obviously, you know, someone said earlier today, so the law is not a defense, that's true, but. There's some equity issues here, so our office is understanding of that, but. Then start seeing those permits being applied for promptly. And where is to to be shared and get that done? And that's another reason why you need to urgently get someone involved as a designate for fire marshal purposes.
All right, so how we gonna do that?
I can make some phone calls or we can all call somebody. Bring names.
You know, just kinda make some phone calls and we just put in agenda item.
Y'all are good with that?
Sounds good. You gonna put the agenda item on?
Yes, sir, I will.
You're good, okay. As always, legal advice is appreciated. Even even when we disagree with.
All right, any other discussion on number twenty?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna move on to number twenty-three. Andy?
Let's discuss and think back.
Well, no actions.
No action.
Twenty-three, public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero three one, replata lots fourteen through sixteen, block one, section twelve. Of the Wildwood Shore subdivision, G W Robinson survey, A dash four five four, Firewood Road, time is ten twenty-two.
Thank y'all.
The application.
Oh, eleven twenty-two, sorry. I ain't got my glasses. That's a long ways. There's two tens below it. Anybody here to speak on that? Any questions?
Yes, no.
All right, time is eleven twenty-three, public hearing is closed. We'll move on to number twenty-four, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero three one. Replatelots fourteen through sixteen, block one, section twelve. Wildwood Shore subdivision, G W Robinson survey, A dash four five four, Firewood Road.
For the court with approval to replat.
Now, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-four.
Boom, saying it all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number twenty-five, public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five zero, replata lots thirty-three through thirty-five. Block two, section ten of Wildwood Shore subdivision, G W Robinson survey, A dash four five four, Silver Lakes Drive. Time is eleven twenty-four. Anybody here to speak on that? Andy?
Um, again, to replat, to to join existing lots and single lot. Um, so creating new lots, it's actually taking existing lots. Combining them.
We're gonna wait till the clock turns.
Kind of small. How big are lots are these? I couldn't read them.
Those lots out there initially.
I know they're small to begin with.
Yeah, well, hey, you're dealing.
Very little.
You're dealing with cul-de-sac lots, which are even smaller than normal. Those lots out there additionally were around fifty foot wide.
Yeah, that's what I was asked a question of this. I don't remember, but I know they're small.
The smallest, they have, they have a public super. That's one of the, that's probably the smallest lots. You see a lot of this. You guys know.
Yeah.
You see a lot of these.
Yeah, usually out there.
Put them back together.
All right, time is eleven twenty-five, public hearing is closed. Number twenty-six, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero five zero. Replatelots thirty-three through thirty-five, block two, section ten of the Wildwood Shore subdivision, G W Robinson survey. A dash four five four, Silver Lakes Drive.
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-six, S. President.
Boom, saying it all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on Gary Hayman. Request for variance to Walker County subdivision regulations regarding proposed Wood Farm Estates residential rental community. Francis Riley survey, A dash four eight five, state probably nineteen Wood Farm.
Probably trying to throw down a massage.
So I'll give a, a quick introduction. So uh, Mr. Hope is here with us today. Give you as more detailed presentation, but. Uh, the the potential uh, proposed development. It's here at nineteen Wood Form Road. This is the property is looking at, is looking at doing a rental community. Um, um, site built cottages and then uh. Having interior roads, interior parking spaces. There's some of the, some of the structures don't actually even front on the the roads. That's part of the various package. It's in front of you guys. Um.
How many lots, Andy? I didn't count them.
Uh, total number of spaces. A hundred and seventy-two. Stephanie is online as well.
As they go, other water. Every riverside waters out there.
Sir.
Just water.
Just water. This guy's gonna build a sewer plant. For his neighborhood out there.
Are they gonna put in the sources?
Yeah, he wants to put the sewer in and then bore under Wood Farm to the creek behind that gas station and let it go out over there. So.
Happy to, guys. Uh, I'm Gary Hayman, as I told your your clerk here. Um, if I put in a, uh, the objective here. When I bought this piece of property is to create. For affordable housing product, high for. But we want it to be screwed out and I think you guys have plenty of that here. Um. Filed a permit with T C Q to put in a sanitary plant because can't get service out of Huntsville and Riverside is over capacity. Um, I have a draft from T C, a draft permit from T C U Q already in place. Um. So we're prom, would expect in another three to six months, we should have T C U Q approval to put in. Plant with a buffer zone, but a bioreactor plant here. We're gonna have to carry our, uh, one of, one of the variances, we're gonna have to forceane our, our uh, water. To an easement with uh, the cattail over here. Uh, to discharge into Rocky Creek, so we'd need to cross the. The underneath the Wood Farm Road, which I believe my property. Goes to the center line and I think the dark shadow prices probably goes to the center line of the code. I've got my surveyor confirming that, but um. The other thing we we've got, when I bought this piece of property. We had a fifty-foot. From the front of road. Standing uh. Flat, I think it was, we're we're unique in so much that this is a singular platted piece of property and not. Individ, individual plaits for each of the houses. So this will be one flat, so we're kind of in the multifamily slash mobile home. Uh. Infrastructure development thing, and we had some, some setback rules. So that's part of the variances is getting. Variance on the setback so we can front our houses. On these independent roads inside, which are not county roads, but private roads. So that's kind of the first piece of this. Package, um.
So right now, the current uh, current regulations that were developed requires on multifamily rural communities that. Somebody left the meeting. Uh, have the same spacing and frontage requirements that lots would have to meet if it was so for for. For a open ditch project that's eighty feet. Or a uh, sewer project that's a curb and gutter. Again, it's been moved to eighty foot. And uh, uh, for open ditches, one twenty-five. So his variance, when you talked about setbacks, I believe you're talking. Obviously, um. With the plan that you guys are looking at, we don't have all the scales involved, but. It's not gonna meet the, you know what your proposed frontage would be?
I do not. Typical is probably twenty-five. And then some of these interior lots don't even front on, these are more of a walk-up unit types here. So they'll just have a sidewalk that goes in between each of the units. And they don't even really front on them.
So the, again, the the code that was most recently adopted by the court requires that these um. Uh, can meet the mobile hallmark regulations, but has some caveats in that, that they also have to meet the minimum frontage requirements. For lots as if they were in the subdivision policy. That they have to uh. Conform to some depth with issues that are in in uh, standards that are in the subdivision policy. He's looking for uh, one of his variances, there's multiple variances to this request. One of the variances is to not have to meet the minimum frontage requirement. Um, that's required by the code. He said, he said, yeah, twenty-five foot on standard and then some interior structures, also these rental spaces. That um, for access to turn it, I guess, by sign.
Right, right.
Not by, not, don't have direct street access. Okay, so I, I mean.
No, no, thank you. That's a really much better way to explain where the company's position currently is as it relates to. Um. On uh, the. And and will, the next thing that we're asking for is. Um, the access roads uh, to meet county standards. I'd like to. My 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 background is heavy sand construction, multifamily construction throughout my my career. This being a singly platted. Uh, owner maintained property, we'd like to deviate from the county paving standards to do a thirty-two foot wide concrete road. And putting in asphalt road system. Concrete roads, um, B B outlets on the outside fall. All your sub, all your standard housing subdivision requirements, we'd like to deviate to center drain asphalt setup, still all designed by my engineer. Um. Who my civil engineer, who I use, submitted to, to the development group. Um. The. The next thing would be the uh, the engineering of. The infrastructure facility itself. Um.
So just as we're going through, also the, he just discussed the second one. So your can, your request is of twenty-eight foot asphalt with curb and gutter.
Twenty-eight asphalt, center drain, center drain.
Center drain, no curb and gutter. Asphalt.
Right.
I didn't have a specification.
I didn't, and I didn't put it again either, because we're still in pre-planning. So kind of based on. How you guys weigh in on this is the directive that I'll send my civil engineer for the design of the property and. And things of that nature, but. How you guys weigh in on this is the directive that I'll send my civil engineer for the design of the property and, and things of that nature, but. The admin is, is what I'm trying to achieve for the county, what I'm trying to achieve for the, for the consumer is, is affordable. I was like, we have to go from paving to, we have to go to concrete paving. So I'm kind of guessing we're about a half a million dollars. More on the development, which is gonna drive up rental rates, should not where I wanna be. I'm trying to keep this prototype in the. Fourteen to sixteen hundred dollars a month for a family to live in. Um, that kind of, that kind of price point. The, the current account, and I've got some, I didn't, I've got some quick pronouns here, but. The county currently requires plan and profile engineering drawings for, for all of the stuff, for all of your projects and. In a lot in the multifamily sector where I've had a lot of my experience, plan and profile is, is not typically what you do, but. This, just a quick example for, oh, there's two top there. It's basically the inner rendition stall pipes overview or cutting down each pipe into twenty-foot sections. Um, and our, my civil engineer. That's the difference between the two sets is deviating from the plan and profiles.
One of those single line drawing kind of thing. Normally we hit. Normally we get back.
Oh, yeah. So from an engineering standpoint, the plan and profile gives you the, the actual side plan that it's stopping. Also a profile ditch.
Yeah.
Drainage and utilities of these. Um, um, he's. Single property, commercial property, wants to do a, a raw plan sheet. Um, um, a red plan sheet without providing those, the profile.
Single line drawing of.
Um.
Not construction process, can have third-party engineers on site. Make sure that things are put in per, per plan and spec. Sign, but the development and we go there, what the Walker County engineer is gonna look at. Um, during the process, the next item is the, uh, waste river. Disposal facility. Uh, that we've seen in E C U, uh. The requirement is that there is a C C N for Walker County. There's a C C F wire to operate a sanitary plant and that certificate of convenience and necessity and. On city Huntsville's got one and Riverside has the water, right? Uh, we don't have a sanitary in place. And we're not going to charge for sanitary, so we'd like to follow the public utility commission guidelines. Of not needing a C C N for this property. Uh. And it'll only serve this property.
Yeah.
In a maintenance operation. I've got some operators that wanna maintain and operate it once we do the operation. Um, next item is, is some of the verbiage in, in submitting for permitting. And it is prior to the approval of our infrastructure development plan that you guys will issue permit. Or. Prior to the, uh, we request, our request and that the I D P be held until I get my. Two approval, then once we get all of the, the sanitary in, but that'll allow me to start construction. For, for our first quarter of twenty-four. So it's just a little bit of a timing of the. The approval and when we can actually start construction of the project. Um, we're gonna put in some little, we're gonna put in a word document, we'll put in hy- hydrants, fire hydrants for emergency service district number one. Uh, we're gonna do some parks. We're gonna really try to make this a really good community. For people to, to wanna stay and, and have some affordable housing. Um, one of the things, um, in my go, in, in developing this property is, uh, Texas Pace Authority is a, is a group that'll help finance for me and Ms. Charlene is here to kind of give a brief thing and we might need some county help on. How our funding interacts with the county, but that's essentially. What our objectives are in trying to create this little community. But all.
Okay.
Heard Ms. Charlene for a minute or two here. She's got some.
Do you wanna talk about the, the question making before we talk about financing, whatever the court.
Well, I think it might be okay. We'll, we'll let them weigh in. Uh, you're, you've done this more than I with different counties, so I don't.
Whatever you want.
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'm gonna talk fast, cause I don't wanna be. My name is Charlene Huddinger. I am the president of Texas Pace Authority. We are a nonprofit five oh one C three that was created in twenty fifteen to administer. Base property assessed clean energy programs, uh, for counties and cities. Uh, it became very clear after the statute was passed in twenty thirteen, that it was unlikely. That local governments would have the wherewithal, the staffing and the funding to do this. So this program that I wanna visit with you about just for a minute is, um, funded by.
Pictures of the puppies or something instead.
Exactly.
Brand baby, he's something like that.
My apologies, if I've created a great short PowerPoint for you and it's not showing up, so I'm gonna just use another one that I did. Recent things for community involvement preparations and cycles. Every business would like to make one of them even stronger. There are two ways to do that, sell more stuff or reduce your costs. This is about reducing costs. It's about lowering utility bills by investing in more energy efficient and water-saving equipment. Problem with that is that it's expensive and it has a long return on investment. So that's why we have deferred maintenance everywhere and that's why people will build. The least expensive projects that they can build to meet code instead of a quality project. And as a result, tenants and owners end up paying much higher utility bills. Those buildings are condemned to higher. Costs for everybody going forward. Plus, we don't have enough resources for the growth in Texas. So the idea here is if we can get our business community and our nonprofits to lower. Their energy use by making, by better investment choices in their properties, that frees up energy and water for everybody else. So we're a nonprofit. We get paid by grants from foundations and user fees paid by the owners. That choose to create this program. Under the Texas Pace Act, which was adopted in, in twenty thirteen by the legislature. Only a city or county can create this program. We run, uh. Okay, so there, um, can only be used on commercial, which includes nonprofit. Multifamily with at least five units, which is what you're discussing here today, or industrial. Our interest is not in serving the county to be a one project wonder. We would like to make this available to all of your businesses, but it's, could we be voluntary? On your part as to whether or not you wanna move forward and on your business community's part as to whether or not they wanna use it. Sometimes it takes a while to get going. The first project's always a challenge. This is what we're trying to do. So on, on the. You're right, you're left. There's, uh, that, that hideous building, beautiful historic building, no windows, no doors. Looked like that for twenty-five years in downtown Amarillo. Developer bought it. He tried everything. He tried condos. He tried everything. He could never make it pencil. Bringing these old buildings back to life is extraordinarily expensive and as we go into next year. All across Texas, we've got overbuilds in office. Buildings that are never gonna make sense as offices anymore, like this one. It can be turned into hotels very successfully or, uh, apartments. We're seeing that everywhere. And this is what pace is designed to do. Okay, so. These are equipment loans. There's no collateral for the lender, so the lenders wanna get paid back in a hurry. And what that creates. Is that tower of pain, that yellow tower of pain. There's huge cash flow loss. When you make these investments, all this program does is knock that over. Uh, so that still has to be paid back, but the owners have the ability, because the lender risk is reduced, to make many more smaller payments. Under our technical standards, I mean, statute, an independent third-party engineer has to validate. Uh, what the contractors are telling the owners and that these are gonna be cash flow positive. We will not approve a project. Unless over that repayment period, the savings to that property exceed the cost. You're being asked to create mechanism, the use of a county property assessment on the land itself. Instead of the lender borrowing against the company. So these are, um, non-recourse. Leans on the property, they, uh, cannot accelerate. Uh, and that is what makes this whole thing work and why a local government has to be involved. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide. Okay, so county, you, you can create the program, Texas Pace Authority. Our job is quality control, education outreach, but quality control. That black line is something that was unique to Texas and unique to the way we designed this. It's a firewall. The government's role is small but mighty in terms of what we require out of these projects. But all the power is in the hands of the property owner and the free market to determine what is the best and highest use of this program. It can only be used for energy efficiency, water efficiency, or creating power on site. So in an industrial or a hospital situation, that might be a combined heat and power unit, using this boiler steam to create electricity. Solar's the easy one from that. Next slide, please. Okay, this is an older slide. We now serve ninety-two local governments. I'm heading to Terrell next tonight. They're gonna become the ninety-third. Um, we, every one of our local governments has a, their own webpage on our website, so people can track. The number of projects and the, uh, results. Uh. We've done eighty projects. They range from seventy thousand to forty-eight point five million. So we are crossing this week. We're going to, I'm very excited about this. It'll be a bank-funded pace project. With USDA guarantees in Clarksville. And it will be a hospital and it will be the first medical care facility in Red River County in five years. So there's really neat things that are happening. When that, I showed you that Amarillo building, fifty-five permanent hotel jobs in that building. So I'm gonna stop there, uh, the, to tell you the way the statute is set up. Should you choose to create this program, the, um, process is two meetings. All of the documents that we use are uniform. All of these local governments are using the same set of documents. Process requires a report that goes on your website so the public can see this. Uh, then there's a resolution of intent. That's the first meeting where you set a hearing date. And then the second meeting is the hearing date or resolution to establish. And a professional services even authorizing us to administer the program. We do this as a nonprofit. We've set it up to be a public service. Because that is the closest we could get to having governments do it themselves. Um, our program was actually written for COGS. And things, couldn't you do it with other upfront costs covered first? We actually have a great relationship now, uh, ACOG. And with the Lowland Grand Valley Development Council, we've run both those properly for them, the local jurisdictions that wanna join them. Anyway, I will prepare all of those documents for yours and your staff, right? Should you decide to go forward, we hope you will. Again, no cost to the county. We are. If we take any criticism at all, it's that we're too tough. And we, these project projects have to be designed to succeed or to earn your trust and. May I answer any questions?
So is this similar to like a, like a, like a public improvement district, like a PID?
It's a brilliant question. Think of this as a one building kit. It's exactly what it is.
So you could assign a, you're gonna basically. By, unless you issue bonds, issue debt or whatever like that, and in exchange for that, you will put an assessment. On the property and say five million dollars. Amortize over a certain period of time. And then basically, we're gonna put a tax on that property on its own separate little line and so this neighborhood. Pace program raised. Paid, basically as a part of their tax bill and then refunded from us back to. You or you.
It's better.
Okay.
That is the basic concept. A PID assessment is a percentage of its, of the tax value. This will be the actual hard and soft costs of the energy and water-saving improvements. And as I said, those have to be projected to be smaller than the resulting savings in order for it to qualify. Uh, the Texas, uh, Tax Assessor Collector Association supported the legislation and then when we put it together, we had a hundred and thirty volunteers. Took us a year. We broke into. Neighbor and the design work in great. We have, do not have the reach to, or the stock to, to be collecting these installments. So Texas was the first program in the country and other people are copying it to say. The local government delegates the job of collecting installments to a private lender. We do not provide a lender. Property owner can use any lender they want. And because, uh, assessments, not a tax, but because assessments. Um, have the same level of the tax, they're collecting ahead of the mortgage. So another protection in the statute is that you have to have the written permission of the senior lender. Before you'll be able to use the program. So the, so these, these projects have to meet our requirements. They have to meet the senior lender. Requirements and they have to meet the underwriting of whatever baseline is gonna be out there. Do you have the basics? The basic concept. So lean on the property because hard and soft costs and interest on this loan.
It's part of the distribution or assessment. That is the only thing. Be developer, bank.
Once, once you create the program, uh, we'll need somebody to be assigned to, to, it's usually the judge or judges, um. I know you got all kinds of new jobs.
Bill, Bill wants some more jobs.
Get an annual report. Happy to give you a call every time a project closes. If any questions come up, we will ask. But, um, this is not something that has, requires your, it's not like today with your agenda where I'll give all these experiences and stuff. Once you create the program, our job is to run it for you.
Now, in a PID. You're allowed to, as the. Overseer or whatever will say that word over there, you're allowed to assess a, a charge towards that PID. For. The, our involvement in it. I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't do it for free, you know? Um, so would that be? What have you done in other places as far as, um, the county or the city that puts it in place as far as? Um, a fee like what I've done in other PIDs that I've done, I've done fifty dollars per unit. Well, this is one unit, you know, so fifty bucks is, is not that, but it's, I mean, there's a responsibility. It's like you say, you're gonna send us an annual report. Probably gonna be court action, we're gonna review, make sure it's good, send it back, something like that. Um. Talk about that a little bit for me.
This is really not an income stream for the county. We have, we have one local government, uh, city of Dallas that adds a fee on our fees. Uh, Dal- Dallas County is a competing program and so Dallas is about to get rid of its fee. Um, because nobody's gonna use it. We have committed to lower our fees. As we become self-sufficient based on volume and growth and scale. We have dropped our fees three times and we will continue to do so. So. Uh, I probably need two or three more people to, to be able to do this statewide, uh, the way I want. The inequality and deliverables that we're committing to people. You can add a fee if you want to, but it, it just makes the projects harder to qualify as cash flow positive. And like I said, the only one that's doing that is about to get rid of it.
But I mean, it, it works well in subdivisions. I mean, like, it's, it's, it's a nice tool.
This, we actually went through some legal questions because this is a multifamily rental. Property, but it'll be the first one that we've done where the buildings are individual.
Yeah.
So if for some reason these, there was a change in decision to make these single family. Uh, the pace assessment would have to be paid off because there has to be at least five units in order for it to qualify.
The net result here for me is I want to get a more energy efficient building and Charlene's Pace Group. Provides the additional capital that I need.
Yeah, help you out upfront and then spread it out over a period of time to.
In new construction because the. Public benefit that we would be delivering to the county is additional energy and water savings above code. So you have to build the code anyway. So we would only in measuring the savings to investment ratio, we would only count the savings above code. Because you're going to get that benefit anyways. We're trying to build above that.
And for that, you put a lien on the place.
In your name, yes, sir.
In our name?
This would be a county assessment lien, just like a PID assessment would be a county.
So we have no financial exposure in it.
None whatsoever. And the way the contracts are between the owner and the county and the lender in the county. Uh the, the lender gets the right to the stream of payments as they come in. You're not guaranteeing the funding. Uh if the installment doesn't come in. Then uh the county does commit to the lender to enforce the past due payment in the same manner that you enforce. That passed the tax debt. And so likely would be um just calling up your debt collection firm. The statute makes clear that you get attorney's fees, penalties, interest and any other costs you would be made whole out of the property if that happens. But that's a worst case scenario that has not happened. And if the worst thing happened, the only thing you could collect is the past due payment if we stay with the land. Hasn't happened yet. New owner would take it with the remaining assessments.
I think, I think it's a, it's an idea. It's, it's, it's a kind of a, you seeing it more in the development work, the PIDs and the SUDs and stuff like that. So I think it's something we can, we'll discuss and talk about. I don't think we make a connected to.
Oh, absolutely not. You haven't, this is a non-action item.
Right.
And if you would like to do a workshop or have me meet the staff or somebody else. We know you, you not going to create it for me, right? Need a property owner that's interested in your business. More time would be happy. The honors work, work with you for you. Thank you.
Alright, so.
Alright, we go back to. The variants.
Right, well, back to the variants. So we proceed through with the letter that you guys have from WOW. Uh looking at the first one, this, this one is about front requirement uh. Um for each of the uh rail sites, rail spots. Um again, our code has a front department, you know, department as per the, the amendments back in the spring. Um that, that requested for labor, you see the recommendation from WOW there, but the court, you know, would need to take an action on that. Um maybe that you guys want additional information. Uh on that, it's um various center two.
Can we talk about these one by one? You agree with that? Will?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Alright, question number one.
It was a, a, a point one on the application, variance reports number one, you were.
It's weird because it's one big piece of property and I'm trying to get an apartment complex out of my head. You know, and say that if these buildings. Shared walls. He would be in compliance, right? The, not the center ones, but the ones on the road, if they were one big structure up and down the road. Versus being broken into individual units, he would be. He would satisfy the road frontage.
Yes, the road frontage per rental site.
So the rental site, if it's one big, we're going to define site, the site, the big twenty unit building. Or is it each individual front door?
Somebody came, you guys with a twenty unit building, have a, like whether it was, I don't know, or up and down. Right, then, then they would need a variance, at least a hundred and twenty five feet per rail space. Under your current code, the way, or, or a hundred and eighty foot per rail space. The rail spaces are individual units.
Alright, that one's weird.
So they, they're single family.
They would also add different, it's different. With some information or, or under the code.
So uh where, where are you going to park all these vehicles?
So there's two different unit types. You've got one unit has a two car garage and a double parking space. In front of their individual unit. And then we've got, it's a little tough to see.
Can you zoom that out a little bit bigger or so, make that better? Sure how to do it on, there you go.
It's a little tough to see, but in the little walk-up units, we've got a whole bank of, we've got whole. Tracks of parking for people to. There's one for everybody. So these guys have, there's a whole row of. Parking in front of each of these guys. That have the, the uh, the walk-up units. And these guys have their tandem parking for cars in the driveway and a two car garage.
So the ones with the reddish brown roof.
Correct.
The white ones have uh no garage there to utilize some parking spaces.
And the frontage of these, of these individual structures is how wide are they? Twenty, you said they're twenty five feet? For, for the ones around the outside edge? Figure those.
From the road, they're, they're about twenty five feet.
Oh, width. The width across the front of these little houses.
Oh, that's not firm yet. They're thirty foot wide houses with. My engineers got it set up at twelve and a half between each house.
Forty two feet. Two and a half.
That's just, that's just for the garage. Yeah, what about the other ones?
Those look to be about two thirds of the side.
Yeah.
Why is it? Yeah, it actually balances. It's pretty close. I think there's like seventy of the larger unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right. Eighty six and eighty six.
The width on the, on the white ones is about what? The thirty two on the forty two and a half on the brown, white.
Right.
Tops.
Take a break.
We can get that identified and, you know, as we fine tune the site.
I think it's just too many.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It all falls back to the roads too. I mean, you're taking a hundred and seventy two lots and that's a lot of people. Lot of traffic. Yeah, it's a lot of traffic.
I need a permit, sir. How many acres is all this? With a hundred and seventy?
The large degree, I think, and first two.
With the big ones.
Tie together.
Yeah.
So uh considering the recommendation on number two is that um. The additional information related to parking counts and that etc. So that kind of stuff would probably be useful for. Um but it's like he's talking about on spaces, some, some more detail might be used for on one and two. I said, your current standard is put each eighty feet wide.
Yeah.
And have a minimum depth of uh under the rise code of. Of sixty feet. Man, you've got two houses on that. Yes, and their shower than the one sixty. That's the, that's the request.
Yeah.
And so access would be by sidewalks on this. On the little, little small ones.
Right. I think those are the ones I'm having the biggest trouble with. I mean, it looks like, it looks like, it looks like a campground to me and um. I, I don't know how we, how we, how we solve, how, how we get away from that. To um. Cause I. I could almost, I mean, I'm not the designer of the thing, but I could almost see if instead of individual houses, if these were um. Duplexes with eighty feet in front of each, in front of each duplex around the big ones. Being able to talk about that, um I can't see the inside ones. That's just. That, that's hard for me because my, the concern I have is like, like with everything else, once you. We approve something for one developer, you know, the guy right next door is going to look at it and say, hey, I could do that same thing to this. You know, and you have to let me do it because you let this guy do it. So um I think we need some more discussion on this one. This is kind of a. Old turkey drop.
It's a lot of stuff, man.
Yeah, it is. So um. Could this? Could we kick the can down the road two weeks and me and you and Andy meet in his office with Stephanie also when it's all, talk about it and. Maybe there's, there's no way in the world this passes. I guarantee you that today. There's no way in the world this has, I, I mean, so I don't think that's even. It really.
Not close.
Yeah, it's, yeah, for that to happen, but I would like to give it opportunity.
Not even with a please?
But I would like.
Absolutely. I know, I know we're pretty far off.
Yeah, so let's, let's do that. Let's um.
I can have my uh site designer tweak a little bit more um that. That walk-up unit is not my favorite thing of development either.
Right.
Uh I'm not married to a hundred and seventy two units because that's the magic number that some computer model told me, you know what I mean? So I'm really open to it and I can have my designer tweak on some of them a little bit more too.
Alright, so if y'all are okay with it, let's just take no action.
Take one of them with you on that commute.
Yeah.
You're going to suggest a couple of things. One is eight nine, the hydrants and the uh base stuff. That's not really, those items are in the application, eight nine on his application. Not only. Those are really not part of, I mean, there were information being provided before, more so than a request being there. They were letting you know, hey, we're going to put in fire hydrants. You don't have a plan for fire hydrants, so that's not a different thing. Like um and then the base stuff is, is, was a presentation. Uh that's not really something that's a very. That's why the literally addresses the. Okay, so A that, B, other thing are noted, it is a visual variant request. Um the request of the agreement is ended to uh. Um being able to start construction prior to final approval. The code already in place under the mobile home parts side of the code allows. You start construction once you get preliminary plans and, and the IDP. So I think that's probably what you're looking for is if you can get preliminary approval, then you can start construction. Then final approval, that's when the final IDPs post, post-construction.
That is.
You're not asked everything else.
No, and it'll take my civil engineer.
That one may resolve itself. On the other ones, I would recommend since it is a uh a variance request related to a subdivision application. And response of the court uh is held to some timelines. Um there's nothing that keeps you guys from, again, denying the variances today. And then request additional information back and allow him to resubmit under the same application. If that's what's important says. If you want to just pass it for two weeks, I'm not saying you can. I don't think we would violate the timeline within the next two weeks, but. As a general rule, I like to see if we're not going to approve it, turn it down. And then, and then as, as on several occasions you guys have in the past, bring it back, bring us additional information. And allow me to receive it without requiring a new or applications.
Okay, well, that's the action that makes it work better. I'll make the motion to deny the variance request number one through seven.
And allow them to resubmit.
And, and allow him to resubmit. Uh as soon as possible and. Will, I'll get with Andy and whichever, you know, going to sit with us here.
The only question, I'll give you a second. You said you're proposing a twenty eight foot road, center drains and no curbing grid?
Fire lanes twenty eight foot.
Fire lanes.
Fire lanes twenty eight foot.
We'll have that. We'll have that definition by the time we come back.
Alright, moving, seconded on my favor, Roger, I am. Talks and cares. Twenty eight, discuss and take action on Andrew Hill, Hillgar's variance request to onsite search facility regulations. Of Walker County regarding use of holding tanks, Buckthorn Acres subdivision, Buckthorn Acres Drive.
Thank y'all.
Thank you much.
Well, Mr. Hillgar's is on.
Downline, Alan?
Hi, Jenny W. and Kay Johnson. I don't think that's.
He's got him.
Okay, so I, I, I give you the. Our current all time waste work. Uh single primary ground, vertical institutional, multi-universal recreational, or like goodbye, as far as they are not, you can make the utility. Other improvements or wastewater treatment that are both previous court added that into our local order. Because we're having a lot of trouble with these counties. Recamps. Saying they were going to haul off. On the pre, right, there was no way to manage it. We put that in place. This particular order we're operating has been stopped in, stopped ten years ago. You know, ever since then, when we get all, see something go in and it has that waste water. This gentleman has an RV site. Wants to be able to leave here. He has some, he has some, some uh. In your backup, you have some uh information from him about the duration and how long. Uh as a normal requirement, we don't allow it. So this is, this is before the court. If the court wants to allow it under these conditions or for some period of time. It has to be from you best. Otherwise, my typical thing is to say, you got to put in a wastewater system. There's no way for us to really regulate to a high degree what happens to the wastewater if they hold it. So if they have an RV and they say, hey, we're going to hold this in the super tank of the RV. And then we're going to haul it off to someplace and, and dispose of it properly. If that's not something that obviously we can keep an eye on. Every day or not, unless it becomes a major issue on the site, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily know whether that's occurring or not occurring. So. That's where we're at. If the court wants to allow it, you guys just need to let me know in this particular case, under whatever particular circumstances that you want to allow it. And um I'll put a uh this, a copy of this in the file so that we know on that site that it's been allowed.
So he's on fifteen acres, is that right? That's what I'm seeing here, fifteen.
Fifteen one oh six.
Fifteen five oh six acres. And I, I don't have my, if you had got like a letter, I didn't see that one. It didn't.
I'm, I'm assuming it's his idea to put the holding tank in.
This is uh to be clear, it says holding tank, what he's talking about, he's talking about the holding tank.
Who's using a horse trail like a camper?
Just a little.
Talking about the holding tank as part of the, the camp.
Well, I've seen him say in the past, you know, when they, when they wanted this stuff, we give, made them put a holding tank in and bring her.
Yes, so. There is a holding tank facility that we do allow on very rare occasions. On uh sites that onsite wastewater treatment is not a good option. So uh there's a couple of deer camps where they only use them a month out of the year, so you can't really treat the wastewater. So they actually install a tank below the ground. The wastewater goes into it, then they have a pumping gap and come out and pump the wastewater out. Um and they permit that under the TCP rules. TCP has. Rules for installed holding tanks. Um we have a couple of other facilities that have those type. Um, we have a couple of other facilities that have those types of, of holding tanks. Um, that's not the proposal here. The proposal here is. To use the tanks that are part of the RV. Right, that, that, that are on every RV or. Spelled like RV, some of the horse trailers basically are RVs and horse trailers. And, and hold it in that. That. That RV's bladder. And then as, as it fills or whatever, they go back and forth to stuff like that, just like you put an RV. Uh, normally uh dump an RV. Instead of putting anything actually in at the site. So we're not talking about an installed holding tank that's permitted. And has a pump contract and alarms on and all that. Talking about the actual. Tank that's attached to the RV. That's my understanding. That's the way it was proposed. So just basically use the RV and then he will dump it whenever it needs to be dumped. He'll drive it away, dump it, drive it back, park it back where it's at.
Why, why is he even bothering us? That's the case.
Yeah, be- because we require that if you have an RV that you are occupying on a site, that it be connected to an onsite wastewater system.
So did y'all, did y'all check this?
Uh.
Did y'all check it or did he just come up out of goodness of his heart?
He, 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 you mean, how did we find it?
Yeah.
He applied for a.
Okay.
Uh, power drop and then said he was gonna hook up an RV to it and we require that that RV have an onsite wastewater system. We always do. Otherwise, the, the, the bad side of this is. Um, you, you end up with four or five RVs out there and, and we don't know when they come and go. Uh, again, some of the stuff, some of the stuff that we just issued, those violations on, out at the other place. Where people bring in a bunch of RVs and start dumping all over the ground and. So this is something the court put in many years ago. Um, and we just. We're just enforcing it. If you guys want to waive it, then that's why I'm. It is. The. You see the, the conditions are in the attached email. He sent some additional. Information. Uh, intermittent overnight stays.
Yeah.
I am seeing.
Yeah, I didn't see that either.
Oh, yes, I'm on six three. What, what, yeah, it's. It's just real short up top. This page over here. Top of that page. Oh. Very top, right there. Living quarters, horse trailer with holding tanks, intermittent overnight. Yeah, it's not much.
You guys want to define that in some more detail while you're put a limit on this is allowed for coming months.
Well, I mean, you're. Like a bus, they can guess, they can spend their full time, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to tell you, like. For our purposes, you know, we, you know, we don't come across this very often. Um, again, it's being operated as a vehicle in and out. We typically don't deal with those. But if somebody's gonna park it, hook it up, hook it up to water. Um. Our current code, the way it's. Was written, what it was written for and the way we always enforce it is you gotta have onsite searches.
Got mailing address there?
Uh.
Mailing address there?
For the, for the location?
Yeah.
It's out of Buckthorn Acres.
I just didn't know if he's permanent address and he's gonna build a house or it's just a weekend camper guy.
They have an address for the site, whether or not they, they are going to be, you know.
Well, I, I, I can tell you this, so I'll tell you where I'm.
This is all the stuff the court uh was originally. How do you establish? You know, all that, so they just made this rule. If you're occupying it, then.
We had a guy out there on the side of a. One of my roads out there that was hooked up to an actual existing system. And we made him move. So if we're gonna make him move, then.
We deal with this quite a bit where we.
Not for making, I mean.
People occupying either RVs or. Shacks or other things uh.
Well, you know, he's got running water and he's got electricity, so.
You know, tell them you either need to get a permit or you need to stop occupying the structure. But, you know, everybody's got little different details about their situation, so. He wanted me to put this in person.
When I said my.
Somebody make a motion.
I, I honestly don't have a problem if he's just in there every now and then. No, I, I don't have an issue with it. It's a horse trailer anyway. If you've ever stayed in a horse trailer one night, he ain't gonna be in there much.
No, there's some nice horse trailers.
Yeah, but it don't matter how nice they are. You're not gonna be in there much.
Like living in RV.
But what's, what's. What, I mean, what's the number? That's, 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 that's the scary part. Is it, i- is it two days a month? It's okay. If it's three weeks a month, is that too many? I don't, that's.
I don't know what that.
Well, just. Logistically.
Yeah.
Our issue is that if you guys put a limit on here and says.
What are you gonna do?
Then we gotta figure out.
We can't enforce it.
Well, it's not enforceable anyway. I mean, it's just a voluntary argument.
That's the reason it was written the way it's written. It's basically if you occupy it, it's on the property and you're occupying it. Then it needs to be hooked up to a wastewater system. If you park it there and then move it, but you're not occupying it and doesn't. Put a tent and, and you want to live in the tent. There's no rule in Walker County. We don't have a. But you gotta have a septic system hooked up to it.
Well, he, he can get power to a barn and then plug his RV in and not even come see us, so.
That's true.
I'm, I'm good with that too, so.
I'll make that motion.
That's my motions.
I don't know what that motion is.
I don't even. I don't want to deny the guy from, for, you know, I mean, I'd say deny for what he's doing because I mean, in reality, if he ever decides to move out there, he got to put it in anyway. But. You know, does he have to be? He, he can change his application and put in a little barn out there and get electricity and then he can just hook. Park his trailer right there without even dealing with us.
Where the code was written is broad.
And I'm fine with that.
Where the code is broad, the reason it's broad is because. Whether it's a home or a shack or an RV or whatever they're living in. It has to be hooked up to onsite sewage. This is the same code that requires me to have.
But he's not living in it.
To an onsite sewage.
I don't know though.
I got a lot of people who are living in RV.
And we've got people lives in barns and everything else and without water.
I don't know.
You know, and, and no sewer. I mean, this county's full of problems.
Yeah, no doubt.
But to make them put in a system for a horse trailer is bullshit. That's just my thoughts in case y'all wanted to know.
That's why I see.
Yeah, but if you ain't gonna do it for one, you don't need to do it for none of them.
So your motion is to approve the variance request, correct?
I don't even know what the variance is now.
You're committing use of the limits borders of the horse trailer. With its own built-in holding tanks without requiring any sort of permit.
So he's approving it?
I'm fine with that.
On onsite suicide, he would still have to get a development permit from phone and all that, but not on.
That'd be my motion, because if it doesn't go through anyway, all he's got to do is just. Apply for a different permit for his electricity. At least he's trying to do the right thing.
Electricity will still come back.
The, the electricity is, is all a big bluff. I don't know how they get away with all the crap they do because they shouldn't really have to. Get a permit from the county to get electricity for anything. That's more of a bluff than anything. Somebody needs to challenge him on it.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve variance.
We got too much government's what we got.
You gonna second it?
Probably not.
I'll, I'll second, I'll second it. Move, move, say it. All favor raised right hand.
We're gonna die anyway.
Motion to disapprove.
Didn't that, yeah, didn't it?
Are y'all voting to?
We, we.
We voted for it and y'all gonna vote against it.
And it just failed.
We got two for, did you vote against?
Yeah, I voted against.
I never saw your hand raise. So the motion fails. Okay.
Dead to the water.
He didn't get a bounce. Alright, Quentin? You want executive session?
We, we do, we do need to have.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session under five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, time is twelve-twenty-two.
Tom Redd, have a good one, man.
I'll be hosting around.
Maybe we need to figure out.
Back up. All right, we're back from executive session. Any public comments on non-agenda? Questions from media? Commission's court.
I'm gonna be quiet this time.
All right, we want to wish Ally happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ally.
Happy birthday. We'll sing uh off the record.